PM, the only item on the agenda is order number 0310013A. This is a communication from State Representative Steven Ledoux, House Bill 3812, allowing the City Council to appoint a new council for Ward 7, referred to the Legislative Legal Affairs Committee. Okay. As to that, there was some discussion as to why this took so long in getting here. And I just wanted to sort of clarify this. It seems as though there was a fax copy of Steve Ledoux's letter that was received by the council office, but it was left at the door, and it was taken in by City Council in Iraqi, and it was placed on the secretary's desk. The date of the fax matches the date of the letter. The date of the fax was 5/29/2003, and it also matches the date on the letter of May 29th, 2003. So, you know, that is the time that it actually arrived at the office. After Monday, June 2nd council meeting, the secretary called Representative Ledoux's office, and she noted that the original letter with the adopted bill had not been received, and his aide told her that the fax copy was sent to the city clerk at the city clerk's request. The City Council did not receive the original letter with the bill for several days thereafter. She says it was delivered. I delivered the letter to the city clerk's office for the June 16th meeting on July 12th, the agenda deadline date. So, in other words, the entire letter from Counselor Ledoux, which I will read, did not get down there until the 12th. There was no meeting scheduled for June 2nd when I found the fax copy, and the copy on June 16th when the letter appeared on the council agenda. So, and the June 16th was when the council actually received the letter and was sent to committee. So, that explains why there's such a delay in the letter getting to the City Council. I'll go back to the letter. "Dear members of the Marlboro City Council, Dennis, our president, City Hall, 140 Main Street, Marlboro, Mass. Dear members, I'm writing to inform you that on May 8th, the governor signed House Bill 3812 into law, and now becomes Chapter 16, becomes Chapter 16 of the Acts of 2003. The Act allows the City Council to appoint a new member from Ward 7. I'm glad that I was able to be of some assistance in getting this done. Natalie Toll's passing was a tragedy for the entire city of Marlboro. Her legacy will be one of committed service to the city and the people of Ward 7. Natalie was well-known for her accessibility to her constituents and commitment to the public service. She will long be remembered for the enthusiasm and friendly demeanor she brought to the council. She always had a kind word for anyone she met, whenever they were a colleague, a constituent, or a total stranger. I would like to extend to the entire City Council my best wishes and sincerest thanks for the professionalism you have shown in the dealing with this tragic event. I'm sure that you will appoint an appropriate person to replace Natalie on the council, even though she cannot be replaced in our hearts. As always, if I can be of further assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me. Take care. Steve Ledoux, State Representative, 4th Middlesex District." I have also, there was an attachment to this agenda, and it was, it is actually the Act signed by the Senate and the House of Representatives, and then the General Court. I have a copy of that, which is most likely in the city clerk's office. So, with that, I'd like to open discussion as to a suitable replacement for Counselor Toll.
Well, just going through some of this, it looks like, I don't know if Dick is the only one that we have considered for this.
I know that Dick, Richard Toll, Natalie's husband, was contacted by Counselor Evangelis, and asked if he would be interested in assuming the seat of his deceased wife, and at the time, he said yes, he was very much interested, and be very happy to, you know, continue the legacy that she had created in the ward. And he stated that he would be very much in favor of that. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd first like to say that this is an awful process to have to go through, and I've been on the council, and this is the third time that I've had to go through it. It's not a very comfortable situation for any of us to be going through. And I was one that at the beginning had said that I believe that this position should be, we should request, as Counselor Yurkis did, to get the approval from the state, but the appointment should be held off until after the election. As soon as the election takes place, immediately appoint that person to the position and allow them to serve out the last two months of this year. I think it wasn't an individual thought of mine, I think other counselors have also thought the same thing. I have since changed my view on that because of the process we went through, and I never want to see that process happen before this body again. Whether on the winning side or the losing side of an issue, I have obviously seen the importance of that tie-breaking vote, and I would support appointing someone immediately as opposed to waiting. I also took the time initially to make a couple of phone calls in discussion with other counselors. I was concerned, I had an initial phone call from someone that was running for the position. And other counselors seemed reluctant and said, you know, "We can't appoint someone that is running for the seat." It is a question of just riding out and having a fair election in November. I took the initiative initially to talk to Counselor Zoma. She informed me that since the redistricting, she'd been redistricted across the street from Ward 7, which wasn't an issue after talking to the representative. He said that would be possible, and it isn't a problem if we appointed someone that was not in the ward. I also did receive a call from former counselor Joe Arcanian, who was interested in the seat, again stating that he would not be interested in running for reelection, or running for election in November. I still have, I was one of the ones convinced, first of all, that we do need to appoint someone, and I've been convinced by some of my colleagues that I want to throw up the question of, does it matter or doesn't it matter if the people or whoever is appointed is running in November? I'm up in the air as far as that goes. I have been convinced that we need to appoint someone, but I think these things do need to discuss, at least on the committee level, if not on the council level. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor?
I just wanted to mention that when you sent out your request, I did respond to you, and I was contacted by Mr. Hagan about filling Counselor Toll's seat, and I think in all fairness, I'm not sure if he was invited this evening, or he knows that this was up for discussion. I'm not sure-
There was no one, no one was invited this evening.
Okay, I'm not sure what your process is going to be, but you did ask for input, and I did respond to you that I was-
I did receive that one also, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See, where to begin? I agree with Counselor Vigent that the council is fractured, and a 5-5 vote could be coming up all the way through, so I've changed my mind on the avenue of not to hold off till November, that we should appoint someone. But I am vehemently opposed to two things. One, that a subcommittee pick a candidate. I think they should put a list up of who's qualified, and by whatever qualifications they deem, whether it's Mr. Toll, or Mr. Hagan, or Mr. Arcanian, or Counselor Zoma. And just say, "These people have expressed interest, and the council as a whole should vote on it." Because I think if you nominate either one of them, are the ones that have already pulled out papers for Ward 7, you'll get a variety of reasons why they won't vote for candidate A or candidate B. Some they don't like, A or B, or they're, as like myself, that would not vote and give an unfair advantage to one of these candidates. I talked to Counselor Zoma tonight, and I asked her if the council picked her, would she represent Ward 7? And she said yes. I've looked at the ordinance, there is nothing in the ordinance, as far as I can see, and granted, I'm not a lawyer. All it brings up is a candidate must be a resident of the ward when they submit their notarized signatures. A candidate can then therefore move out of the ward and run for election. Counselor can move out of the city, as one did, and still represent the people. I think we should pick someone that has no intentions of declaring and running for the seat. That's where I'm coming at. You know, maybe the city solicitor gave us a ruling, but Counselor Vigent said, and I've read everything, Stevie Ledoux said that it doesn't prohibit us from naming someone, nominating someone, and filling the spot outside the ward. Yeah, she's technically not in the ward, but she's across the street, she served in the ward, and her own choosing decided not to serve again, or run for reelection. So, as far as I'm concerned with Mr. Arcanian and Mrs. Zoma, we have two very good potential candidates, and would not give an unfair advantage if they, to someone that is running. So, I am against picking either/or candidate, since they both have pulled papers, and I'd like to see committee stand up to the full council, who they feel would best serve the Ward 7, and let the full council make that decision. Thank you.
Well, my feeling on this is that the person should be a Ward 7 resident. And the fact that Richard Toll has kept up with everything going on in the ward, kept up with all the committees that Natalie was on, and basically used to critique all of her appearances at the council and committee meetings, that he would possibly be the best candidate for the job. There is nothing to say that anybody we put in there is not going to go pull papers and run for the job. There's nothing to say that. We can't make that a stipulation. That's not legal.
No, it's not a stipulation, but I talked to Counselor Zoma, and she says she has no intentions of running. Counselor Vigent talked to former Counselor Arcanian, says he has no ambition or thoughts of running. I take both at their words, both honorable people. And it's not making a condition, it's making a qualification of who's suitable to serve out an interim basis.
I also think this ought to be filled just as soon as possible.
Oh, I agree with you-
Without continuing on and on, so that we don't keep having these 5-5 votes-
You may have a 5-5 vote if you nominate someone, a two- or three-person committee-
Right.
-nominates a singular person, you would probably have many votes on the council floor.
See? Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
From the sounds of things, it sounds like the committee process is completed. Is the committee process completed? What is the purpose of the committee tonight?
The purpose of the committee this evening is to deal with the communication from the Representative Ledoux on filling the position. You know, you brought in some very good points as to, you know, would we come back with a recommendation, or come back with no recommendation? You know, if we come back with no recommendation, then where does it go? On the floor? You know, are we going to come back with a list of candidates, and then are we going to thrash them back and forth on the floor? Would that be, you know, that's the way I'm looking at it.
And obviously, none of us want that, but it just sounds like, from discussions with Counselor Page, that there's no, there is no process, we're going through the meeting, and we're going to make a recommendation, and that's it. If that's the case, then let's do it and be out of here in the next 10 seconds, and move on to our next issue, because we have plenty of them to deal with.
Yes.
If the chairman and the committee are going to set a process and deal with it, that's why I came to the meeting.
See, you know, my feeling is, is that the position should be filled, it should be filled as soon as possible. The point of the 5-5 vote in the budget process, that was a very ugly scene, you know, it was like us against them, you know, and that is not the way that the council should run. I think that if we can come up with a candidate, you know, I think it should go before the full council, you know. I did not contact Counselor Toll. I know that Counselor Evangelis is the one that originally contacted him, and he was the one that came up with his name. I know that in the past, other members, you know, deceased members, their spouse has been asked to fill the position for that time period, you know, until the next election. Bob Ledoux, Joan Ledoux?
Joan Ledoux.
Last time, that was the process.
That was the process.
Before that, that was not the process.
No.
That time was not the process.
I'm just using-
Well, Henry passed away at the end-
Henry Emon.
At the end of the term, anyway.
But, you know, I know that, you know, we have to, you don't want to thrash it out on the floor as far as bringing four members, four names onto the floor, or coming in with no recommendation. Either we come to a recommendation this evening, and then go from there. You know, I know that Mr. Hagan, his name was brought, said to me, I have spoken with him, not about this, but about other issues, and I've spoken with Mr. Toll, but I haven't spoken with anyone else, you know, and no one's contacted me concerning it.
I know Bill Hagan has pulled papers to run either at large or Ward 7. He's pulled for both.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd just like to make a comment. Couple of counselors here have mentioned the budget process and the 5-5 votes. Since this is a live meeting, or will be televised at one point, I just wanted to make it clear that no matter what this council did, that person would not have been sitting in the seat during the budget process, and it would have been totally unfair to appoint somebody two weeks before the budget, and expect them to be knowledgeable and be able to vote on all the budget things. So, to continually say that we had a problem here in the council because we had a 5-5 vote, yes, we did, but the seat was not, the empty seat was not the issue. The issue was with the 10 people sitting in the room. We could not have appointed that position any sooner than we're doing, and there seems to be some sentiment that we've dragged our feet. We haven't dragged our feet. How many times has the state told us that it's all set, you can do it, or the money's on the way, only to get the money two years later? We needed that document from the state before we could move forward, and I don't think that that's been brought out and made clear to folks, because I don't want them to think that we did drag our feet, because we did not.
I think that what the point that Counselor Vigent was trying to picture frame was the idea that when you come down, when you have 5-5 votes, it's a very difficult situation.
Oh, I do understand that, but I-
It's just a picture frame.
We're talking about the future, trying-
I do understand that, but both gentlemen on the committee have alluded to the fact of the budget process and the us against them, which, you know, sometimes votes go that way. It had nothing to do with the fact that the seat wasn't filled at the time of the budget process. It could not have been filled.
Absolutely agree.
And I do agree that it should be filled as soon as possible, but I do feel strongly that there should be some type of process, to be fair to everybody.
Counselor Evangelis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was me that called Richard Toll, because I thought it would be a natural to give him a call, seeing what happened with the other counselor, and Counselor Duke passed on. And I've had, whether we nominate Richard Toll or not, he already pulled papers to run for the seat. I personally don't believe that there's any urgency. We have approximately six meetings maybe left before the next election. I'm sure that the council can roll over any of these issues, and we only meet one time this month, one time next month, and maybe four more times after that. I feel as though it would be an undue, I've had a second thought regarding this. Now, Richard is a nice man, he's well-informed, and I know that Natalie would have loved to have seen him sit in her seat. But because of the circumstances that have arisen, and now you've got four individuals that are interested in the position, my opinion would be to leave the seat vacant, and to, Richard is already pulling papers, Mr. Hagan's interested in any other individual, and my thought was just to throw this in the mix, that whoever wins that November 4th election, I don't know if the power of the council will be allowed to maybe put him on right after that day, or does he have to be, he can probably be sworn in, in a special swearing-in ceremony, however they want to set it up. That's my immediate thought regarding this. So, the committee can do what they want, I feel as though what you're going to do is you're going to take one individual, and you take him on the floor, and the 10 city councils are going to have to vote on him. I think the people should decide that. This is someone who's going to be here for a while. Whether Richard is nominated or not, like I said, he is going to be running for election, along with Mr. Hagan. So, I think that if you can throw that in the mix, food for thought, then you can think about that.
I do agree, from listening to the other counselors, that if somebody has pulled papers and is planning running for office, that appointing them gives them a big leg up, as far as being elected, and would probably not be fair to the other people running for that office. So, perhaps we ought to look at-
The only thing is, is that I think that the people that live in Ward 7 need someone to represent them.
Right.
You know, and to wait until November for someone to represent them is, you know, we could have a, 10 taxpayers decide that they're not happy with the outcome of this, and they can turn around and file a petition against us.
I'm sure they get it, but my response to that is that there is four at-large city counselors, and their job is to cover the whole city, and they should be picking the slack up on any of those important issues that may arise. And the residents of Ward 7, many of them that are well-informed, I'm sure, will call their at-large counselors, knowing that their former council was, is deceased.
Excuse me, Counselor?
Just to reiterate on Mark's discussion about at-large councils picking up the slack, I received three or four phone calls on issues, one of which, the person never left her name or her phone number, and I tried to ID it back, and it was a private line, but I still investigated and sent up the line to see if it was a real issue or not, and if it could be resolved. And I've worked on two issues that have not been resolved yet, but I'm still working as an at-large counselor in Ward 7. So, I think we're doing that. Now, will we have the same effect as a Ward counselor? No, but would someone new coming in? No, I mean, there's a learning curve, unless someone has been a counselor before and knows how to hit the road running.
May I add?
Also, three months have gone by since we put this request in, so things, opinions were different, you know, three months ago, where we were going to say, well, we got six, seven months, that we really should get someone in to represent that Ward 7, and we really should. And it took, it's unfortunate that it took that long to get a decision from the state, but that's part of the process, and that's the way the state works. So, now that we're getting closer to the election, and things are getting a little stickier, I feel as though, like I don't want to reiterate what I said, but I feel as though that they can be represented by the ward, by the at-large counselors, and I'm sure that that's not going to be a big issue for them.
See?
Can I just throw out that, that I would ask that you consider asking for a, not a nomination, but just a letter of intent from anyone interested in the position, even if it's a one-sentence thing saying, "Yes, I am interested in the seat in the Ward 7 position." So, you have something that says, "These four, or these 10, or these two people are interested, or aren't interested." And have a quick meeting next week before our council meeting. If you have one letter, then that's the one you act on. If you have no letters, you act on that, and then from that point on, the committee decide, the committee recommends, no recommendation, that we leave the seat open, the committee recommends we appoint X, the committee recommends Y, or the committee recommends, here's the two applications, vote it out on the council. And I don't think it's something that any of us want to have the long-drawn-out discussion on, on the council floor, but as Counselor Pope said, I just want to see some type of process, and whether it's to come back two weeks from tonight and say, "We're leaving the seat open till November," or two weeks from tonight saying, "We recommend appointing this person," at least we come out and make a, here's our decision, like it or don't like it, here's our decision. And so, we can move it for the next committee, the next council meeting, and have it done by then.
If we're looking for people to send us a letter saying they're interested in the position for the remainder of the term, would we then not have to advertise that? There's got to be some way other than just this meeting to get the word out.
I mean, I would contact the three people that have contacted me, and say, "If you're interested, just write a one-sentence thing saying, 'I'd be interested in filling out the seat, I have intentions on running, I'd be interested in filling out the seats, I have no intentions on running.'" Send it to the chairman, and if he receives any, great, if he doesn't receive any, that's fine, too. We can deal with it. But we're talking about, I talked to, and you talked to, and they said probably, and they said maybe, and, you know, I think the three people that contacted me, or two people that contacted me, and the one I contacted, would all serve. If I talked to them today to say, "Are you still interested?" No, but I was expecting, I expected the committee to set, "Here's the process, here's our timeline, go."
Okay, it's a very good, it's a very good idea that you have there, you know. We're not just going to open it, we're not going to close it to the people of the ward, then, so we're going to open it up to the residents of the city, then.
Your decision is chairman and committee members. I don't see any obstruction to that.
According to what I've read, and according to my discussions with the state rep, I might be wrong. I haven't researched it, I haven't spent time on it, so I can't answer that, but-
Maybe it's something that we should ask the city solicitor about.
But maybe you get three applications from non-Ward-
Non-Ward.
Occupants, and you find out next week, when you have your meeting, legally, we can't accept these three applicants. So, sorry, I only have one left, or I only have two left, or I have none left.
But we have to go on the basis of tonight's communication through the local cable, or tomorrow's newspaper.
That's basically it, and anyone else that contacts any counselors that-
Nobody could do that.
You guys can do what you want, but you have to get a letter back to the chairman by X.
I figured, the chairman, 21st, 28th, the meeting is on the 28th. We call a meeting prior to, you know, say, do we have any council meeting, a subcommittee meetings on the 28th?
The 21st is Urban Affairs.
Urban Affairs is on the 21st?
It's next Monday.
And that's at, and Public Works is going to be on, I think, there's a date. I wish, I had that here.
Public Works is next week, in October.
Yeah, that's the 21st. The Public Works is on the 21st at 7:00. And Urban Affairs is at what time?
Mary Jo.
Mary Jo.
What time is Urban Affairs next Monday?
Excuse me?
Urban Affairs next Monday.
Yes, there is.
What time?
Seven.
Oh, Public Works is also what, 7?
21st.
They're both the 21st. Is it 21st, 21st?
Yeah, next Monday is the 21st, I do know that.
Yeah, we have two meetings at the same time.
That's okay. It does. It does.
Public Works and Urban Affairs.
All right, I'll go 7:30.
Okay. So if we meet at 6:30?
That'd be fine.
Yes.
May I add, I would recommend that the committee seriously entertains a motion to, you know, to leave the slot vacant. There's too many people that are involved at this particular time. I think this throws a mix in, it's going to leave the councilors to make that decision. My decision right now would be to vote for Richard Toll. He's the person that I called originally. And he's the first one that would be a natural for that seat, to fill that slot. Now, the mix came in when he decided that he was going to run and pull papers and run now. That's where the, now they're mixing everything up here. Now they get four individuals on this side that want to run. So now, I would recommend that you leave it vacant, let the city councilors at large take care of that, take care of the residents in that ward. And there's only six meetings left, and I don't know how you're going to advertise it and all this other, I mean, I just feel as though you're prolonging this. And you're going to leave it up to the councilors to vote who's going to represent that, represent that ward. Now, I think the committee should consider that.
Mr. Chairman, I did speak with approximately a dozen people in Ward 7 over the past week or so. I didn't receive one response from anybody who felt that they were not being represented at this time. Several folks have contacted at-large, as well as ward councilors. I think that I support Councilor Evangelius in the fact that this is the middle of July now. Notification is always difficult in the summertime. And the election is November 4th, and we could appoint the day after the election. Whoever is the victor in the election is appointed to the seat. I don't, I could be wrong, but I mean, the folks that I have talked to, I don't think anybody is feeling slighted at this point that their voice is not being heard. I think there's 10 people in this room that are more than willing to answer the telephone and take care of their problems, and I know that each and every one of us has done it.
Yep. I know I have.
Mm-hmm.
I've taken care of issues.
So I personally don't see a huge problem with waiting until the day after the election.
The only question I would have is if we have any kind of sticky votes coming up that we would want to have another counselor make the decision on. We've got special permits and so forth that are going to be coming up between now and November. So I don't know if having that seat filled is important for those particular permits or not.
Is that for our own comfort, though, or for the comfort of the residents of Ward 7, since none of these, none of these special permits particularly lay in Ward 7? So would we be appointing for our own comfort because we're afraid we can't get along?
Oh, no. Not that we can't get along.
Just thought I'd throw it out there.
We can get along.
Councilor Katz.
First of all, I apologize for being late. Traffic coming out of Boston was brutal, but when is the meeting actually? In August. The August meeting is, is it after the?
August 25th.
Okay. August 25th is after the time that the papers have to be returned, et cetera. Maybe a suggestion is we put off the vote until that August 25th meeting, and at that point in time, we'll know if there's an unfair advantage or not. And if Mr. Toll is the only one actually running at that point in time, there's no unfair advantage, and he now can get somebody in there to represent Ward 7. My suggestion would be is that we put off the vote until August 25th meeting.
The voice of reason.
Okay, there's another point of view. So you actually, if you waited to table it until August 25th at 6 o'clock, or 6, there are 7 o'clock, whatever, and then by that time, we'll be pretty sure as to...
Whether it's representing an unfair advantage or not. And if there is no unfair advantage, then we go ahead with the vote, and then the people in Ward 7 can have a representative at that point. Other few people feel comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay, so what we can do is table it till August 25th, then we'll have a meeting at that time, and we'll take a vote then.
Make a decision whether we're going to make the vote or not.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. Are you still going to accept letters from people to say they are interested and are willing to serve?
That would be a, yeah, I would think that would be...
Up until the 25th of August, then?
Yeah.
That would give, a word would...
The week before. Let's make it the week before.
Okay.
So in other words, the 18th, 24th, 17th?
August 20th, that'd be the 18th.
18th.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Not to throw a wrinkle in it, I think that that's an excellent suggestion, but are you going to put this evening some type of process in place that will take place on the 25th? Are you going to invite the folks in that write letters? Are you going to ask them questions? What's going to happen on the 25th? Are you just going to pick the person that you want? You know, I mean, I think Robert made a very good point, but we could be sitting here having the exact same discussion on August 25th.
We could wind up with 50 people.
That's true.
We could wind up with 50 people.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to have, are we then going to take and decide that we're going to invite all 50 people, or are we...
Well, that's why I'm asking you, is there...
I don't want to do that.
Well, what would be the point of the letters, then, if you're not...
Just a question, when do papers have to be in?
August 14th.
August 15th. And we ought to make it, we should do something around that date, 15th or the 16th, and have it done before the 25th, which is our actual meeting night, so that we could bring it up.
Absolutely. Go on. See, I don't want the process to be too cumbersome.
But there is no process at all at this point.
If you have 50 people, you know, would we entertain individuals from the entire city, or just are we going to take it and put it down to just residents of Ward 7? You know, probably if we go down to the residents of Ward 7, you won't wind up with 150. You might wind up with 10.
I would suspect if you limit it to the residents of Ward 7, then you reduce the pool, and I don't think that that's a bad idea. But my concern is that you've decided to take letters of interest, hold the vote some point after papers are due.
Mm-hmm.
But that's all we know, we're, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
I mean, are you going to, is your committee going to meet with these people? Are you going to take the letters on face value and pick somebody? I just want to know what the process is going to be, so that we're not having the same discussion a month from now.
I think that what would happen is that you could receive numerous letters from individuals that you have no idea who they are. So you'd really have to meet with them.
Counselor Katz.
Maybe just table the whole process, and then, I mean, I don't want to see any of us shoot from the hip as to what is the process if we do get a number of letters, and maybe we can talk about that at our next meeting. We have time now, between now and August 25th, to develop the process, and I would hate to see us just shoot from the hip at this point in time and come up, just to come up with a process. So I think we have time to do that. I think the, I think the motion is right now is to table the discussion. And having said that, the idea is to come back and make sure we're in a position to make a vote or not by August 25th.
So in other words, it's just a motion to table?
It's just a motion to table at this point in time.
Then we would, you know, set another meeting?
We'll set another meeting, but we'll clearly have one after the August 15th deadline, and we'll know if there's an unfair advantage there or not.
And we, you know, are we going to entertain individuals only from Ward 7, or are we going to entertain the entire city?
For Ward 7, I think you'd entertain individuals for Ward 7. That's my personal feeling at this point in time. But again, I don't want to leap to a process without, you know, giving it some time and some thought and getting other input.
But we need to have those letters in by then.
Yes.
If we're going to have letters.
Letters of intent from residents of Ward 7.
Mm-hmm. If you're representing Ward 7, I would think you'd want to live in Ward 7.
I guess, I'm sorry, I guess I disagree only in the fact that you're just prolonging it. I mean, I can't see a problem with saying, we're going to entertain letters from Ward 7, all the folks that write us a letter, perhaps your committee can meet with them, I don't know what you want to do, but to say that you don't want to be tied down to a process, you're eventually going to have to make a decision. And from what I heard at the beginning of this meeting, the biggest complaint everybody had was the dragging of the feet. Well, this would only drag it further.
Mr. Chairman, you going to entertain any motion to keep it vacant? Keep the slot vacant? If you start getting five or six applications, you're going to go through an interview process and decide, the committee's going to decide who's going to be the next?
That's what the committee, that's why we have a committee.
The committee's going to decide who the person's going to come onto the floor for a vote?
Could be, it could be, could be a person that's not interested in running.
I don't know, I just feel as though the seat should stay vacant, like I said earlier, and then vote on it. There's six meetings left. We can roll over any issues, you can prolong issues, ask for suspens, to move projects along. I mean, I don't see any problem with just keeping that seat vacant and not giving anyone an undue advantage. And if I said anything, I already talked to Mr. Hagan, and he respected my decision to vote for Richard Toll, and those are the only two that are committed to this race. So I feel as though where he already decided, Richard Toll already pulled papers, he's already in. So, not in for the seat, but already in the race, and he's serious about running. Now, I feel as though we should just set this aside and keep it vacant for the short period of time.
Counselor.
There was a motion to table, and I suspect that there's no more discussion at that point in time. And maybe we just, I motion again to table it, we'll maybe come back in a week or so so we're not dragging our feet. We'll have a process ready to go then, and maybe we can set a date for a meeting for next week if you want to at this point in time.
Motion made in second, is the table? All in favor?
Table.
Motion table. Okay, we should set a date for...
Pick a date.
Pick a date.
Pick a date next week.
Okay. 21st is Monday.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. 6 o'clock, so we'll have, set a meeting for 6 o'clock next Monday.
Thank you.
The 21st. Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned. Second. Motion made in second, is adjourned? All in favor?
Yep.
Top committee adjourned.
At 6:50, the first item on our agenda is Order 9964, which is a request of Attorney William Brazano for Gerald N. Seymour, trustee of GNS Realty, 127 Lakeside Avenue, that the city council abandon and discontinue the portion of Old Lakeside Avenue which runs through its property. Good evening.
Actually, I wasn't aware this one was on this evening, because I thought this one would be taken in conjunction with the Brazano property, which has the same piece, the dead end.
Yes.
At the end of Lakeside. The last discussion that you had relative to this site was that we needed to get Public Works and Mr. Lefrenier involved to determine what rights they would want to reserve, because there are certain easement rights that they'd want in that property. As far as I know, not a whole lot has occurred since then, and I guess, since it's on the agenda tonight, I'll ask what we can do to stimulate this, both for myself and for Mr. Bergeron's client, the Brazanos, because this is an issue that, at least for these two properties, I think should proceed as soon as possible.
You are correct. Not a whole lot has happened.
Correct.
Concerning this particular order or the next order on the agenda, which is the one you're referring to.
Correct.
As I understand it, and I know we have our department heads here this evening, the best, what I would like to, and the committee, you know, we can chime in here together on this, what I would like to suggest to you is that you hold off, or we hold, we're going to hold off, my suggestion is, as a committee, to do anything on either one of these orders until after September 28th. Because by September 28th, we expect to have a comprehensive plan in hand as far as addressing this entire area on Lakeside Avenue. And hopefully that will, because what is there right now, quite frankly, is we have a situation where we have a residential zone. You know that that exists on this particular piece of property.
Oh, I do, yes, I do.
And the adjacent property.
Yes.
So all the parking that is occurring right there at this time, or would occur right now, if this were okay, but it's illegal. And I know that your neighbors are parking illegally. I mean, this is zoned residential, and what you need to do, but you may want to hold off on this until after September 28th, but you would have to come before us and request a zoning change.
Okay, if I can be heard on that, your own bylaw allows you to extend your parking 400 feet into adjoining zones. I've been to see Mr. Reed on this and spoke to him when this issue was brought up to me a couple of weeks ago. So in essence, for 400 feet into the residential zone, which abuts the Old Lakeside Ave, you would be able to have parking. And I'll defer to your own zoning officer to give you an opinion related to that. But when this issue came up, I looked at your zoning, I spoke to Mr. Reed, he's doing some further researching, and I talked to town, city council, the city council lore to get his take on it as well, Mr. Golden. And I don't have a problem with the first item being put over till the 25th. Item number two, though, I do, because this, we were in here in February or March, I can't remember what it was, asking you for a determination as to how you read that deed, as to whether or not it allowed everything that goes along with parking, turning radiuses, curbing, the type of thing that you would have to put in for parking. We got kind of a, I wasn't sure what the response was that night, but I got the feeling it was, yeah, it can be used for anything that's related to parking. But Mr. Reed needs something more substantial, I think, from your board or from somebody to, I guess it would be your board, since it was, burden was placed on you to make the determination as to what the intent was of the original order on June 5th, 2000, and the deed. Was it, number one, to allow just parking spaces, or was it to allow turning radiuses, any curbing that would have to, anything that's incidental to parking? The second part of this is, when you conveyed the property after the June 5th, 2000 order, it was conveyed with walkways, stone walls, and landscaping, and the piece of property that you are, or somebody's contending at this point, we're not allowed to alter that or change it, or bring it into code compliance, which Mr. Seymour, who's owned this property for a long time, has a site plan that's before the Site Plan Review Committee, they will not act on this until they get some direction from your board. He's being held hostage here for something which I don't think was intended by the city council when they conveyed the property, because they clearly weren't saying, you have to rip out what's there and just make it parking, because there were walkways, there were accessways, there were stone walls, and there was landscaping on the front of this building. And there was parking already established in the front of this building. The new site plan that has come in is making the walkways comply with ADA, making everything else comply with the building code. Some of the walls might not have been right, they might need to be adjusted, some of the turning radiuses on some of the parking. I don't think it was the city council's position when they voted this order, or they conveyed the property, that they were going to say, you can't bring the property to compliance, you can't do anything other than just park straight there. It's, I think we'd be remiss to say that it wasn't the intent that, anything that's related to parking, they didn't want another building put on here. They didn't want something that was going to increase the activity at the site. All that my client's trying to do, Mr. Seymour at this point, is get through Site Plan Review where he can make the corrections to the walkway. I know that there's been a lot of controversy about this site because of Hooters, but Jerry Seymour owns this piece of property. He intends to proceed with his, either his own restaurant, another restaurant, or Hooters, or somebody. And he shouldn't be held up for this long a period of time when Mr. Reed is just looking for some direction. What do you believe was the intent of the city council at the time? I wasn't here then. Some of you, I'm sure, were, probably were part of those discussions, but to sit here and say that it wasn't to include travel lanes, landscaping that goes with the parking that's associated with it, turning radiuses, code compliance for walkways, I mean, that just flies in the face of, you know, what the community's about. So that being said, I have no problem with number one, sitting idle till the 25th, because I think that has to work with the whole redevelopment project. And I'm not saying that Jerry's going to go in and build his site plan, he'll participate, they'll try to get this thing worked out, and help with that whole area, because it's going to enhance his property as well as everybody else in that... because it's going to enhance his property as well as everybody else in that strip.
When you say he'll help with that whole area, are you referring to the fact that he'll contribute funds to help with that area?
He would contribute funds. I, I know that there's been discussions with that, but we're in a bad position because we're getting heat from someplace other than this council, where as, as compliant as we want to be, and if we said we'd pay for the whole thing, there's no guarantee that somebody is not going to appeal our process and Jerry trying to get his site plan approved, or any permitting that goes with it.
That's true.
And we don't want to be held hostage like that and pay out of pocket a lot of money to help with something that's going to enhance our property and everybody else's property. So I would like, if we could, to either address tonight or shortly, item number two, so that we can get off of square one. If you need more direction from the city solicitor, or from Mr. Reed, or from engineering, tell me, I'll follow up on it. I, I just feel remiss on my client's part at this point, that this thing has been languishing for six months. And it's, it's not a, a hard question to answer, I don't think.
Mr. Reed, I want to comment, please.
Comment?
Yeah.
Okay, first of all, I agree that the first issue, let that sit until the other, the other pieces of the puzzle come together.
Okay.
The second one, I think, I think there just needs to be a decision by Urban Affairs and the council as to what was really intended for that phrase only to be used for parking, because certainly parking is, is only one piece of the function, is landscaping, is curbing, there are trees, there are shrubs, all things that are incidental to the parking. And I think where the question had been raised in site plan as to the literal interpretation, I think we want to hear directly from the council that you intended to mean a parking area with all the other features that go along with it.
I'm sorry, you want to hear from the council that we intended it?
Intended it to mean other than just parking spaces, travel aisles, curbing, landscaping, other features that support that. You can't create, can't create just a parking space with no way to get to it. You can't create a parking space without the required features that the zoning ordinance requires, like islands, trees, shrubs, things to contain it, striping and that sort of thing.
Okay.
A lot of pieces coming together on this, and certainly we're all trying to be as precise as possible. I'd like that opinion from the council. The last vote really didn't get very specific on that at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, committee, let's look at Order 9964, and can we agree to just table this particular order and move on to the second order?
Motion table.
Second.
All in favor? Posed, is tabled. Order number 9920, and this is the order that the city council investigate the present and future use of the land which was conveyed from the city to Gerald Seymour, trustee of GNS Realty Trust, in order to determine whether said present and future uses are allowable under the terms of the deed in the city council order which authorized the deed. I want to say we have... The deed attached. We do not have...
Is it there?
Yeah. So we don't have anything from Solicitor Golden.
Madam Chair?
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I ask a question of the bill inspector through you?
Sure.
Steve, the decision that's made on the parking, on the definition of what's included in parking spaces, won't that change the makeup of the area down there and how it's designed? And how it's laid out?
The, the land has, all of the land in that area has significant limits as to what can happen.
Correct.
Because of the way it's configured.
Right.
And from an engineering standpoint, there are things that, that the zoning ordinance encourages existing sites pretty much, if they're existing and there's already parking there, they're assumed to be something you don't have to tamper with until somebody decides to change things. By deeding this land to Mr. Seymour, gave him the opportunity to make the changes and bring it as close to conformance as possible. Certain things are going to be driven by the ordinance. That's landscaping strip along the street on the new Route 20, landscaping depths, the amount of trees, the amount of shrubs, and the circulation aisles. Second piece of that is the handicap accessibility, as to how you have to construct a parking lot. Certainly, if you remember the old Rocco's, and tried to put any standard engineering template to that parking lot, the cars were parked all the way from the shoulder of the street all the way up to the restaurant. There was no semblance of how they should be in there, none of the spaces, if you, if you measured the stripes, none of them met any standard dimension, there were probably no two alike, actually, if you went to measure them. They were all just pretty random stripe.
But the decision on the parking spaces, doesn't it determine some of that? How that will be laid out? How that will be designed in there?
The dilemma is, the wording of the deed says, "Use of the property is restricted to parking only," semicolon. That seemed to be a limitation that the committee felt. Did that give us the ability to require all those other features that we would normally require that is not asphalt pavement, meaning curbing, trees, shrubs, and turning aisles? We want to make sure that this gave us the latitude to require all the things that everybody else would have to put in.
Okay, let me, let me change my question a little bit. This council has voted to handcuff, handcuff itself from making any changes along Route 20 for the next few months, while we have a design of Route 20 coming forward. But we continue to entertain requests from individuals and corporations and attorneys to make changes for themselves. So we've limited ourselves, but we'll make all these changes for you guys, so you can get them all through before we change the rules. My feeling is, we change the rules today, or we throw all these out and put them all on hold, as the chairman, as Councilor Rocky said at the beginning, I don't understand how we can entertain these, keeping ourselves handcuffed. Either we're changing the rules, or we're locking everything up, and everyone's playing under the same rules.
If I could just comment quickly to that.
Please.
There is, there is a deed to Mr. Seymour, which he has been beat up about, in the fact that he did not comply with the terms of his deed. All we're trying to do is get him through what the deed required, that's to get the approval of Commissioner Public Works and Site Plan Review for his existing Rocco's site. So we're trying to follow through on the obligation that was put into place when this deed was transferred in 2001.
But we've only been waiting three years. We're asking him to wait three months.
Which is the September date that I spoke of earlier.
Which, which I can address, that, I can say that most likely what is going to be designed on Route 20 in that area is going to be very similar to what is designed. I can say we wouldn't go forward to construct it at this point, but we need to be able to get the Site Plan Review, because we'll be working in tandem with your highway department, your Department of Public Works, because they'll be incorporating the things that they want into this section of Route 20 as well. I mean, I raised the issue the first time around, I think, that I think you're better off with one entrance for both those restaurants down there, because it would make it a lot safer. So I think what we're trying to do is just get an interpretation, and paragraph A of the deed requires him to go to Public Works and Site Plan Review, which intended him to incorporate all these aspects of Site Plan Review, which is the size of the parking spaces, the curbing, and all of that. I think if we come up with a study that's going to alter that whole section of Route 20, I can say that my client would comply, as long as it's within reason. I mean, obviously, if you're going to make it a 200-foot buffer, nobody's going to comply down there, you're going to end up doing a taking.
And I will go back to the first part of my statement, and I won't speak for everyone on the committee, I mean, they certainly, you know, you all have an opportunity to do that, but that's why my, my suggestion to the committee is that you do wait until we have some plans which would be ready, you know, that we're going to have plans in late September on this, instead of taking those chances, because, you know, we've taken chance before, and quite frankly, we've gotten burnt, so that, that's how I would, one second, that's how I would like to proceed on it. Counselor, we'll go around, Counselor Clancy.
There is already a plan for that lot, with the curbing, with the right-way entrances, with the parking shown on the abandoned Route, uh, abandoned city property. Road abandoned city property, is, you know, you're talking about the cart before the horse. You know, you're talking about, you know, the possibility of a, some sort of a plan coming forward. Well, it's already there, it's already gone through conservation, you know, so, you know, I'm just saying, you're saying to, to, that you have to have this, but I'm telling you, the plan has already, I've already seen the plan, I've already gone through the plan, the curbing, everything, it's already, it's already gone through engineering.
And it, it hasn't gotten through Site Plan Review, because they're waiting for an interpretation on the parking. And that's the only issue that's missing in this. And, and I, you know, if, if you were to say to me, fine, if it isn't done by the 25th, then you know what, we'll let you go and we'll give you the interpretation, but why not give me the interpretation now? Because we're going to need it later anyhow. We're talking about the section of Route 20 that's in common with everybody that runs along the new Route 20, and which is on the outside parcel closest to the water. Basically, what we're talking about is the parking configuration that's against the building.
You're taking...
Where the wall is?
Taking, you're removing the wall.
We're, we're redoing the wall so that we can have it ADA compliant, correct.
You're going to get more parking there. If that whole wall is coming out, utilities are coming down beside Lakeside Oil.
Right.
You know, connecting in somehow. The, there's even curbing going across the old, the old, the road bed.
I don't, I don't believe there's curbing going out there, but I will point out that in Site Plan Review, on the adjacent parcel, they allowed parking spaces all through that old Route 20, there's probably twelve of them.
Yeah.
That are laid out on it, but now they're saying we can't do it on our parcel? I mean, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
It shows, on the, okay, so what you're saying is that the site, the, the design that you have, that shows the parking on the right of way, or the cities, the cities, the old Route 20.
There's little portions of it that stick out into it, correct.
The old Lakeside Ave.
Right.
So in other words, you want the use of that for parking.
No, I just want, at this point, I just want interpretation of what parking included, so that we can figure out what's going to go in front of that building. Because if you tell me it's none of the other things, then we're going to send our engineers out, and we're going to design something that complies. We'd prefer to do something that works better for the site, because it's better planning.
Because what I've seen, it actually shows, you know, obstructing the old Route 20, the old Lakeside Ave.
I don't think it's...
I've seen, there is an opening on the side by Lakeside Oil, but I think it's...
Should be an opening on both sides for the travel to go through.
Counselor.
Thank you. I have to agree with some of the comments that were made already. This has been before us for three years, and nothing has been done. Suddenly now, we, the council has decided as a whole to make some fascinating improvements out there and to get a plan in place. I don't think we're holding anybody up. We waited three years for this to come into compliance when it was voted on. It's really, truly not my fault that nothing was ever done. The owner of the property waited until he had a buyer, and now all of a sudden, it's quick hurry up. I'm going to support that I believe we should wait until after the 28th of September. I don't think three months, well, we waited three years, is that much to ask. There's been many opportunities to have this taken care of, and it isn't until just recently, when Rocco's left the site. I, being the ward counselor down there, on several occasions, contacted the owner of the site and did ask him to clean up the parking lot, which he sat here in this room three years ago and said that he would, and he never did.
All I can say, I was not here three years ago, but I am here today, and I was here in February also, asking the exact same question, what is the interpretation of this? And I'm back here again in July, and now you're asking me to wait until September? Which, I mean, what's so difficult about interpreting that? It's not going to impact what that study's going to tell us.
Counselor Katz.
I'm going to be supporting not only the chairperson, but the ward counselor, I guess, on this as well. And the reason, Mr. Brazoni, is, I think you mentioned earlier, you're not going to develop it anyhow at this point in time.
At this point, we're not going to start the construction.
Right, you're not going to start the construction, you're just waiting for the interpretation. Well, I think the interpretation will be ready by the, hopefully by the 28th, if we have this plan in place for, for that section of town. You can put all your plans together and be ready to go. You can think of it as, okay, we're going to agree with your interpretation of, you know, putting in the various aspects that go with the parking space itself and everything you mentioned earlier. But do your plans, you're not going to develop it, you said, the actual construction, let's just wait till the 28th.
We have our plans, and we have them before your Site Plan Review Committee, but they won't act.
Right.
Until they get an interpretation.
Until that particular design for that area in that study is done. And you said you're not going to construct, so I don't, I guess you can have the site plan wait, because you're not going to construct anyhow at this point in time, based on what you, you mentioned earlier.
We would like to start construction before the winter, though, and, you know, now you've got us out into September. September, we have to go to Site Plan Review, it's another 60 days there, we're into the winter, nothing's going to get done there. You know, so you've hamstrung them for another year.
I just, I don't want to start.
Yeah, no, I know.
Have you, you get your way, then somebody else.
I, I know that.
Held up, so I think, I think it's cleaner if everybody just wait till we get this study, that, that not only are there a couple of councils working on, but members of the community as a whole are working on. So I think it's a community effort, and I don't want to hamstring them either at this point in time.
I, I don't think we'd be hamstringing them.
Right.
That's, because the interpretation is going to run, whether it's today or it's in September, it's got to run with the site, and if there's a overall plan that's laid out for what the section that's closest to Route 20 is going to be, we're going to have to comply.
And I, and I just, I mean, we can go back and forth on dates and timelines, and we could do that, but I've got to tell you, in five years, chairing this committee, and we've had one developer after another up here, and everybody needs to get, you know, those shovels in the ground before, God forbid, winter sets in, and yet, I'm still sitting here waiting five years later for some of these buildings to go up, so I, you know, I don't get real panicky over how, how fast they're going to go in. It's amazing what we're still waiting to see, but Counselor, you had a comment.
Yes, I did. I see. Let get wind in here.
Actually, I'm going to go with the chairperson and the ward counselor. I feel that we've already made a decision to wait until the plan was finished, and that we should do so, and not give anybody, let anyone slide in at this time.
Counselor Clancy.
Just have one question. This is for Commissioner Loefrenia. Do you know when the ETL is supposed to begin the construction of the force main, and will it impact this parcel of property?
Well, will it impact it? We have, we have a portion of...
Commissioner, would you speak into a microphone, please, because we're, if we're not live, then we are taped away.
It will impact the, the parcel. We have a portion of the force main that has been installed. My sense is that they will be constructing that sometime within the next three to four weeks, or begin construction sometime within that timeframe.
Do you know if they're going to start on the higher end or the lower end?
Generally, they will, they will start where we left off, which would be down on the, the lower portion.
So in other words, they'll be digging right in front of the 125 Lakeside Ave?
Yes.
Okay. Within, so it could be two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, depending on, you know, their schedule.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from any of our department heads on this particular order? Counselors?
I'd like to make a motion to review the, the plans when they come before us in September, and then we'll make a decision at that point in time, as it relates to Order Number 9920.
Any discussion among the committee? Ter, any, any more discussion among the committee?
Second.
It's been seconded, all in favor? Posed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next order on the agenda is Order 10050, which is a communication from Attorney Cipriano with a petition for a rezoning parcel owned by Lor and Elizabeth Realty Trust for Robert J. Vouchas, trustee, consisting of 2.1 acres, shown as Mar, as parcel 15 on the Assessors' Map 73, located at 714 Farm Road, from Residence A2 to a business district. Good eve, oh, good evening.
Madam Chair, good evening, members, good evening.
Excuse me. Attorney Cipriano, I know that you left us the last time, and you were going to get us some information for us. How successful were you?
When you say gather the information, we did make a response, we sent a response letter back to you.
Oh, yes, I saw that, yep.
Addressed those issues, is that what you, did you want me to go over that with you?
Yes, so why don't you go over that for the entire committee?
In, in reference to that, relative to the planning board's letter, that we made it, we're making it very clear to you, that if Mr. Vouchas is ultimately successful in obtaining the zoning change, he is prepared to file the application for the requisite special permit for the multifamily... special permit for the multifamily over 55 project within a few days after the zoning amendment decision. As to Chief Leonard's concerns, full disclosure will be made in the proposed condominium documents at the time of unit sales and also at the time of, of advertising for the sale. And in effect, the acknowledgement will contain the fact that the prospective residents are aware and accept the existing impact of airport operations in close proximity. We did confer, our letter of June 30th tells you that we were going to confer with Mass Aeronautics, we did, the middle of last week, and I spoke to Warner Kirchner, who is the chief general counsel of Mass Aeronautics, and he has furnished us with the so-called Aeronautics Commission Request for Aerospace Review Form, which is the trigger document for them to evaluate ultimately if, if we go forward on a request for a special permit, the impact and how it may comply or not otherwise comply with some of the distances that they would be concerned about. We've also been in touch with the Federal Aeronautics Administration and they are going to furnish us with the companion federal form, probably sometime later this week in hopes that if we do go forward on a special permit, we will have these things simultaneously filed. As to Commissioner Lefrenia's commentary, we will address site mitigation and neighborhood impact issues if in fact we do get to that special permit process. As to the building commissioner's concerns, which are really a, a primary issue, we are addressing that issue in, in our letter. Tonight, we have, present with us are Ernie Winsky and we have a letter from David Winsky relative to property that, that David owns that's abutting or fronting on Boston Post Road. And the fact that they first have no objection to what Mr. Valtius is doing and secondly, would have no objection to rezoning their property, which I understand, getting into that just a little more, the, the, the zoning district dividing line between Residence B, excuse me, Business B and Residence A2, the calculation of the area, which is A2, is somewhere between, I don't know, the, the owner thinks around 24, the building commissioner's calculations are more like 33. It's very difficult to make the calculations. I couldn't make them, there's no way I could venture a guess, but it, it isn't the majority of the lot. And we note for you that, that I believe Mr. Winsky, Ernie, who's here, is willing to go forward on a, a potential zoning change, which would make all of his lot the Business B. But we note for you that there's already a dedication of business use on that property. It's my understanding that the, the, that portion which is in the Residence A2 is actually going to be utilized for storage trailers on the lot. So you have a full dedication on that site to a business use. We also note that the Princeton Property Site has a full dedication, even in its Residence A2 area, to the multifamily use which would be consistent to ours. In further addressing that, that issue, it, it would be the hope of Mr. Valtius that, that possibly this, this committee would allow this to come out, this requested zoning change with a favorable recommendation before Mr. Winsky comes in with his proposed zoning change. Because I think that it's really pro forma in terms of having him do it. I don't think Princeton Properties, one way or the other, would prefer to do this or not, but Winsky is, is coming, Mr. Winsky is coming forward and is willing to do it. Our fear is that if we wait for that technical change to occur, then, then this project is going to get slowed down. And of course, it's, it's going to venture a comment, well, does the, are we permitted to do this from a purely legal standpoint? And of course, subject to the, the determination of your own city solicitor, we would suggest you are because it is not, to use those nasty words, spot zoning, it is not. Although this little parcel is being identified as the only lot, the criteria for spot zoning is that one lot be treated differently, but differently in its use from adjoining lots. And we would submit to you that the use of Princeton property is dedicated multifamily and mostly business. The use of the Winsky property is dedicated business. So in and of itself, we are consistent with our neighbors, at least to the, to the side that it would be the concern relative to the Business B District. The Conservation Commission correspondence, we note that the wetland areas have already been flagged as required and that a detention area will be subsequently proposed and all project construction will be beyond the 100-foot buffer. And as to Mr. Lima's concern, we're making it explicitly clear that we're going to make sure that all the documents for the condominium are restricted to over 55 ownership. And we will address at building construction stage, if we get to that point with a, a permit from this council, buffer noise from airplanes within the flight paths. And all the other documentation will indicate again, as I indicated earlier, specific details about the location in, in conjunction with the airport. So I believe that that, those were all of the concerns that the, the committee had sent me off to, to get response on before this meeting.
Thank you. That is everything that we did ask for. Mr. Reed? Comments from you?
I listen to what the Counsel Cipriano just spoke about and I would, would agree that his principle and the way he, he wishes to go forward with it does make, does make sense because the parcel to be, I actually have a map that I call it in here.
Thank you.
The parcel that is supposed to change from Residential A2 to Business is adjoining two parcels that are used for uses that are permitted in the business zone, even though there's a little sliver of land that is not actually business zoned. Those parcels were, the Farm Road property was developed before that zone, all the zone lines were created. And Mr. Winsky's property, the, the portion at the back, the reason the line occurs where it does actually is the zone line is created 500 feet from the center of Route 20. So if any of these lots are more than 500 feet deep, you're naturally going to have the back portion of the lot that extends into the next zone. So it's a logical, logical transition to change this to business along with Mr. Winsky's small back portion, which is about 100 feet on one side and 220 feet on the other side. So that four-sided, four-sided portion of the back is, is about three quarters of an acre, I could call it together. What it does is it, it certainly creates the availability that other business users could go there, but in your wisdom of dealing with a special permit, you will be able to control those uses that he chooses with, you know, a certain small amount of risk that if the multifamily does not survive.
Right.
You would have the potential that this lot could be developed for other uses as of right in the business zone.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Reed? One on the committee?
No. I just have the fear of spot zoning, that's, just have that fear.
I, I don't think it graduates to that, but, but part of that issue will be resolved. I mean, it's, it's just a technical curative thing. We, we'll, we'll file with you tonight the letter from David Winsky, which clearly indicates he has no objection to the rezoning of his parcel. And if, if the committee would prefer, I'm sure that that could be filed soon. It's just that we don't want that technical review process to delay this possible consideration by the full council. And again, as your building commissioner points out, they're all consistent business uses.
Right.
There's no segregation of this parcel into a special type of use that everyone else, or at least those abutting on one side, don't enjoy from a zoning standpoint.
Counsel Yerkes.
Yes, a concern maybe with Harry is the fact that we don't have the FAA, they haven't filled out the forms and if we change it from residence to business and it gets denied for dwellings, then what's left is a totally different use of that piece of property since it's been rezoned. I think the city or someone within the city has to find out whether it's just a pro forma sending out, filling out these forms and getting approval or there's some, you know, some major concerns that they would have before we attempt to rezon this. Because once we rezon it, then he has the right then to develop it as a business and it would be a total different use than over 55.
I think, well, we, we have already indicated that we, we don't intend to do that.
No, no, but if, although if you get, if the FAA refuses you, and I have no idea if they do or they don't, then what are you going to do with the land?
Well, I don't know, but the, but the answer to the form is that the form really can't be filed until you have a project. We don't have a project.
Yeah, so it's, that's a catch 22.
It is, but, but of course, they, they want to see the, I'm sorry. Allowing Mr. Valtius, if that's okay?
Yes.
I spoke to the owner of the airport and the whole requirement with the state and the federal FAA is the height is, and to the approach of the airport. So we have to meet their criteria. Probably the maximum height of these buildings with the garages is going to be four, probably around 14, 15 feet, which is just about the existing home that's there. But before we could build anything, you know, they do have a, you know, a restriction on it and therefore, no matter what permits we would receive, if we got the, okay, we wouldn't be able to build anything, you know, by, by their standards.
No matter what it was?
No matter what it was.
Business, residential or anything, okay.
And chances are, anything that you, anything you were going to build is going to be at least, you know, 14, 15 feet in height or higher is considered to business or anything else.
Just to get something from the city solicitor, his input.
Well, and Attorney Cipriano had mentioned that earlier too, getting some input from-
That was my only concern.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. Counselors? Department heads?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think what we can do with this then is, we are meeting next week, get some interpretation from Attorney Golden.
Concerning the zoning?
The zoning and the-
But, and also the FAA.
Yeah, the Aeronautical Regulations, both, what I've already done, federal and just a, a ruling just for, for our bodies when we take it to the full council. And we should be able to act on it at our next meeting and get it out for our following council meeting, which is on the 28th, I would expect. We can move on it.
Go ahead.
One other thing, just, Mr. Yerkes, the, in the back of Winsky's property-
Dick.
In the back of Winsky's property, Aldo had said that there was storage, you know, trailers, there are actual mini storage buildings, you know, they, they have a building permit and they have an existing height. And even the back of that property is, is somewhat considered in that flight path because according to Mr. Stetson, when they were even building Avalon Village, that they needed to go under the same review because anything in that flight path needs approval and has to file an application. So, but there is, there is a building-
Could be pro forma, I don't know.
There are buildings going up there right now on the, in the A2 section, the back of that property.
Okay. So we will get a ruling or some documentation from our city solicitor and have that on hand for the next meeting and then we will take a vote on it and be able to report it out.
Motion to table.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members.
Second.
All in favor? Posed, table. Did you get that, Larry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Order 10022, which is the application by Metro Park Corporation for a special permit to build and maintain a retirement community at Fitchburg Street.
It could take a few minutes to set up, gentlemen, if you need to, because I'm losing the committee here.
Are we getting unpopular here? They're all bailing out. Yeah, it's a good idea.
heads have had, have not had ample time to review the plans, so they will not really be giving any, well, I mean, they can comment this evening, but as far as any detailed comments, we'll expect them at, you know, our next meeting or the meeting thereafter. And our Conservation Commissioner, Priscilla Ryder, has given us some comments this evening concerning the project. Do you have those?
No, not yet. I don't.
She'll give them to you. And I know that you've spoken, maybe you haven't spoken, but I, I would expect that you've seen the letter from Patricia Winsky.
Regarding universal access?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have.
Okay. And, and then I do have an early June correspondence from Mr. Anastas where he indicates what he has talked to you about as far as this proposal. So we may have an opportunity to review some of those this evening and have you, excuse me.
I just also wanted to make sure as part of the record, we received a letter from Grace Lyons?
Yes, and I have that in here too, as far as concerning this particular-
Who's that? I'm sorry. Grace Lyons, the head of the, from the, not the, from the Community Development Authority.
No, actually, I think she was responding as a resident.
I didn't know that. I know that she had told me she had written the letter.
I have that letter. We'll get you a copy of that. Is this, are you giving this to me?
So it's for last-
Oh, okay. I have that.
And I, I had received and reviewed the letter from, from the building inspector. I think it, it, there are some issues there that relate to some, some broader concerns that I thought would might be good to be, to be addressing this evening.
Okay.
Before getting to some of the specifics. I got the, and I appreciate the fact that the building inspector was, was, was able to get the, the plan reviewed and to get his, and to get his comments down on paper. I just want to make a few comments. The, the first item that, that Mr. Reed had referred to was the fact that he was concerned that there were not many amenities in the, in the proposed, in the project. And he, and he compared that to Avalon, Avalon Bay, JPI, Cummings Properties. I know he referred to Thafford Indian, Indian Hill, but I, I think, I guess I would respond in a couple of ways. Certainly regarding Avalon, JPI and Cummings, in all of those cases, what you're talking about is apartment complexes. In one case, for example, you know, one of the, one of the facilities that, that Cummings offers is a restaurant, but of course, they're required to do that. That's actually a part of their permit because they're an assisted living facility. In the other locations, you're talking about residential facilities which, which, in which incidentally, typically these amenities were not mandated by the council. They were simply amenities that were part of what the developer thought that the developer needed in order to market their units. Because typically, there were apartments, the typical size of an apartment is less than 1,000 square feet. We're talking here about places where people are going to own and live. The unit sizes are going to run from 2,600 to, or excuse me, from 1,600 to 2,200 square feet. The only amenity that I am aware of in the, in the comparable project, the villages at Crane Meadow, is there, is there a clubhouse at the villages?
Small community.
There's a, there's a community center, which we didn't think was, was, was necessary here. We don't think that they are, that they are highly used. And I guess my suggestion would be, those are all classic questions which are, those are developer questions, those are marketing issues and are not the, the, the kinds of issues that necessarily should affect, as far as the community is concerned, the community impact of this project. I will say certainly that in terms of having folks here have adequate- I will say certainly that in terms of having folks here have adequate walking trails or an adequate place to go to take a walk, they're going to have a huge one because of course, the, the bike trail, the piece of which is in front of this, was all built by, by Metro Park, should be completed by, I believe, next spring. And that's going to run from Hudson all the way to the center, to the center of Marlborough. But I would say that, that the, the fact that there are no amenities here is, is not, does not somehow make this project a substandard project. It is true, going to number two, that when we were here in the fall, when we were originally talking about dealing, proposing that there, that this land be zoned RCRD as opposed to being made part of the overlay district, that one of the, that one of the things that we showed you at that time was a conceptual plan, which had been done for us by Wes Worth, our landscape architect, showing units around individual greens on the project, where we're going to have units going around these, these, these square greens. That ended up getting rejected because we found out that, that our landscape architect, who is a great landscape architect, unfortunately, had drawn the plan at the wrong scale and that, when we gave it to the engineer to try to figure out how this green concept was going to work with, with the actual unit count, it didn't work at all. When we did our presentation regarding this rezoning though, before we ever came up, in with the special permit, the plan that we showed is actually the plan that you had before you, only with another 30 units attached, with another 30 units. It was the same design with basically individual so-called lollipop cul-de-sacs. That is also the same plan that we've always shown to the neighbors and it is the plan based upon which the neighbors, the neighbors had been supportive of the rezoning and have been supportive of the special permit. Regarding number three, Mr. Reed indicates that there is a, a mature stand of trees on Crowley Drive in the vicinity of buildings 10, 11, and 17. And I could, I thought those were the numbers. I was talking to Priscilla about where I thought these were. And I could, I could point those out to you. And it is true that those trees will, will be going. The trees on this site, you can't build a site like this without the trees going. I mean, this is really a site where you're going to be, where you're going to ultimately be taking the present trees down, putting in these structures and then growing things. I know that Priscilla, when I talked to Priscilla Ryder about this, she said that was an appropriate reason why she really would, in this case, want a detailed landscaping plan because you'd want to make sure that the new things that are growing to replace the old things are going to be substantial. But it's true that those trees are, are not going to be there, nor are, nor are any of the others. That is a function of having a project with, with this kind of density. For any project that has this kind of density, it was a function of The Villages, of The Villages at Marlborough East. If you were to try to save out of that forest a stand of trees, it would end up looking like, I would bet, a very funny-looking stand of trees. Because these are not trees that have been growing by themselves up to now. They've been growing in a forest, which means they are trees that have a head way up at the top and nothing below that. Because the top part is where the, was, was where the leaves were, where the sun was, was, and everything else was dead because it was inside of a forest. It would end up being, it would be like that very bizarre set of trees that we saved for 3Com, that we all drive and see coming up 495 and go, what us? That's silly. But, I mean, it would, so I guess we're saying that that's, and we don't think, we think that's a, that's a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it would be an interesting landscape feature as far as what we were trying to preserve if we're, in terms of our marketing of the site. But once again, as a special permit issue, didn't seem like one that should, that should affect the special permit. Mr. Reed indicates that the, that the, that the parking spaces are not, all 518 parking spaces are not indicated on the plan and we will want to address that. But one of the things I wanted to add here is that the reason why the plan as presently configured is, has less units to it. It's down to 222 units versus the original filing, which was over 240 units, is that when we originally went to site plan review and talked to many of the folks who were here, there was an issue about making sure there was, there was adequate parking for visitors. And they felt that the, that the roads that we were proposing were not wide enough to provide parking for visitors and they said, that's been a problem at The Villages East. We don't want it to happen again. And so we took that into account, went back and, and worked with our engineer, who eliminated one of the entire cul-de-sacs. And, and instead widened all the roads so that the proposed roads here are 28 feet wide. To give you a sense of what, of what 28 feet is, Milham Street, where it hits Hood Street, is 24 feet wide. Clinton Street is exactly 28 feet wide. Brigham Street, in front of Council and Iraqi's house, is 22 feet wide. This was, this was measuring it with my feet, right? I was going around today. This is what I was driving around when I was calling councils, I was checking. And, and, and Farm Road is, is between 24 and 26 feet wide. All of those streets allow parking on both sides of the street. All of those streets are throughways. We're talking about now proposing 28-foot-wide streets on dead ends so that you're going to be able to have on-street parking. Now, one of the questions that came up was, how many on-street parking spaces will that generate? And I popped that question to Bruce Salick and he may have an answer tonight. We will certainly have an answer for the next meeting. But the reason why I'm, I'm trying to address this is I know that was an issue that came up and it's an issue that we tried to address. Like all issues, any of these adjustments causes a reduction in unit number and that's what happened. We ended up dropping over 20 units to provide the additional space to assure as far, that as far as the fire chief was concerned, you could have parking on the street and still have plenty of room to be able to, make sure the fire truck would get up the road in the event that it was necessary. Finally, there was a, Mr. Reed suggested that the emergency road access and the wetland buffer are, are shown on the plan and we can show this as being not part of this site, but as being retained by the, the developer, so, as part of the, the later site which is going to be developed. And his suggestion was, as a, that he says, as a function of density and control, the land should be included, be included part of the condominium project. I, I would think that for, for control purposes, we have projects all the time where there are, in the city, there are subdivision projects regularly where there are easements, right-of-way easements, and easements in order to make sure that drainage gets maintained. So I wouldn't think that it is necessary for control. For density purposes, all that it would do, if you were to take that land and, and add it to this parcel, is it would just, it would give you kind of an artificial sense that instead of having one unit per 6,200 square feet, which is what you have now, maybe you'd get down to one unit per 6,000 square feet. It wouldn't actually do anything in terms of the effect, of the effect on the project.
There's one point, also that emergency access that you see there serves not only this particular development, but also the future potential commercial development on the remaining nine acres. So that's a joint emergency access. So whether, whether, just, so, just, I guess the point is whether, I think it's inconsequential really who owns the land or what, it's not buildable anyway. And it's just the best way it lays out.
And, and so I guess, in, in summary, I, I think that the, the heart of Mr. Reed's comments were addressed to issues relating to the, 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 the density of the project. We think that the density in this case, for all the reasons that we suggested at the public hearing, is an appropriate density, that the issues that he has raised, I don't think, and, and my client doesn't think, are, are issues that, that, that should be, should cause changes in this plan as part of the special permit process. Although, once again, we got to talk about any of them.
May I add to that, if I may, Mr. Chairman? When we went to the informal site plan, we didn't actually go to a formal site plan. The, the site plan committee was kind enough to...
Susan, John, is your mic on?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The green light is on.
Okay, you're on.
He just doesn't talk as loud.
I will move it closer. There you go. We had an informal, we had an informal hearing with the site plan group and Priscilla, the fire chief, and all the others were there. And they gave me a list of ideas and just comments. It was nothing, you know, terribly formal. I took those comments to heart, however, and I did come back with a plan that is substantially reduced from the original amount of units that we were originally talking about when we decided to go down this path that most everybody, including the neighborhood, was comfortable with. But I heard what the site plan committee said and I came back with a modification. I was, you know, I think the fire chief and the others had very good points. And I, I tried to, I tried to address that. This plan is a reflection of that, just, just so it's clear. I mean, we, we...
That's better. Go ahead.
You're good.
Okay. So I just, I just think it's important for everybody to know that I'm not just here with my first plan. This is like the third and a half plan, you know, and each time it's shrinking. And, you know, I've worked very diligently to be sure that not only am I serving the site plan group, I'm also trying to serve, you know, the neighborhood, the city as a whole, and also make economic sense out of this. So that's how it all, and that, and each person isn't going to get 100% of everything. But I just want you to know, I've extended flexibility and I'm continuing to do that and willing to do it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on these particular points, one through five, or four? Five, one through five, from the committee? Counselor Pope?
I only picked up, received this memo today, but I do have to say that I guess, I do definitely agree with comment number one, that I realize the walking trails are going to be there, that I would suspect with a community of this size, there would be somewhat, some more amenities for the residents, whether they be areas set aside for community gardens or something. But all of our other communities of this type have some, some type of amenity for their residents and this doesn't provide them anything.
Well, actually, we have a plan, you know, we actually sketched out and there is ample room there to put gazebos in, bocce courts, and things of that nature. We actually have a sketch with all that. You realize, and you're looking at 40, or excuse me, that just the green area in that plan is over 30 acres of land. That's a very small plan showing a very large area. There's a tremendous amount of land there open that, that could be, that some of those things, and we plan on doing that.
This is an 80, this is an 80-scale plan?
This is a 60-scale.
60-scale, you're usually seeing a 40-scale. The site's so big that...
So along with, you know, doing some areas like that, which would allow for some community interaction and maybe some screened gazebos and things of that nature and summer houses, which I think are nice. But the other thing is, is the nice thing about this particular site, it's very close to shopping, which is, you know, the reason it was looked at for retail, okay? And the reason that people like it is because it is so convenient, both to the Solomon Pond Mall and to the mall in Hudson, I don't know what, exactly what they call that mall there, but it's, it's very convenient. Folks like convenience and this is a very convenient, so it's very convenient. It has the walking trail. Someday that trail's going to go all the way to Acton. It might actually end up going to North Hampton at some point. So there's, there's, there's a tremendous amount of activity there. Plus, there's interaction, I've worked very closely with ASABET on, and, you know, there's no need to duplicate resources and duplicate things. I mean, there's land there and we're working closely together and there's a number of fields that could be created. So there's a lot of things happening there in the final analysis. I, I think it's, it's dice. Putting a, putting a structured, canned, you know, clubhouse, typically they're used by less than 5% of the residents. And it's just expensive for the people, nobody wants to take care of it, everybody wants to pay a lower condo fee. I'm trying to keep this as a, you know, we've always talked about trying to keep this as reasonably priced as possible, but the more stuff we add, the more the condo fee goes up, the more people, you know, it just gets more expensive, so. But we can do some of these smaller things, which I think add for the community and, and the fact that each group lives on its own cul-de-sac there is a nice way to build community, so. But I, I plan on doing as much as I can there and we can get more into it as time goes on. But I, I agree with you, Counselor Pope, it's a good point.
I would add on to that, John, just out of curiosity, because I've never been a condo owner, but I'm learning more about them than I ever thought I would need to know. But nonetheless, if, if you don't have an area, like a common area such as this, and then you, you know, you're going, there'll certainly be a condo association, where would, where would there be a common meeting place for these individuals?
Well, I was gonna, I would think that I would work out something either with ASABET, you know, or, or work it out with a local, you know, like we do at the Holiday Inn quite often with meetings and things of that nature. You know, a lot of times people don't want everybody packing into one unit or into, necessarily into a, one of these conference, you know, little conference things they put on those sites. But typically in these condo associations, a handful of people rise up. It's not much different than, than, than community leaders within this community. There's a handful of people that do all the work. It's the same in these communities. You know, a small group of people, you know, take the initiative to be trustees and look after things. So a lot of times, it's just, people just fill in a ballot at home and send it in and as long as, you know, their condo fee stays at $150 a month, they really don't care what happens and the streets applaud and things are maintained. You know, I mean, a lot of people just want to live and let live. There's others that, that want to get more involved. So I, I think it's rare that you'd see 222 people, families, you know, and singles and doubles come to a hearing all at one shot.
And I would expect, I mean, I'm, I'm not in the real estate business either, but I would expect that if a person or a couple were looking for, or a person was looking for that particular amenity, then they would, you know, go to another complex in this city and choose not, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you realize that too. But if you didn't have those amenities, it could really...
I actually think this has more amenities than any other complex in the city because of its natural aspect to the rail trail. I think the rail trail's a huge plus for it and the closeness with ASABET and maybe the future hockey rink that's going to be built there and things of that nature and the closeness and proximity to shopping in the highways. A lot of people that live at these complexes, you've got to remember, only live here six or eight months out of the year. You know, they might have a place in Florida, they want to be close to their family. Their family might live in Uxbridge or up in, you know, southern New Hampshire. This is very convenient. They jump on the highway and they're there. That's what they're looking for. They're looking for a more convenient lifestyle. That's who buys these. People who want to be able to lock the door and walk away.
Counselor?
Okay, thank you, Counsel. You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven cul-de-sacs.
We eliminated one. There's, there's seven remaining.
There's seven in here, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Are they going to be landscaped?
The cul-de-sacs themselves, the centerpieces?
The centers of them.
Yes.
What, are you going to put in just grass or...
No, I would like to put, I like to put tree, I'm a big fan of trees and, and perennial gardens and cottage gardens. And, you know, when you look at, you know, you drive into the entrance of The Villages East, it's pretty impressive, all the trees around, you know, I don't know if you've noticed lately, but if you look at that, all the weeping trees and everything, you can't even tell there's a retention area there. You know, so that type of treatment, I like.
And by the way, Counselor, Priscilla Ryder, in her comments, referred to the fact that we had not filed a landscaping plan with this revised plan. And we, we want to get that into, like ASAP.
It's being done right now, as a matter of fact.
To deal with those issues.
As a matter of fact, Counselor, I, just so you know, I've done, I've been focusing on the cross-sections with the neighbors, you know, make sure that, you know, they can see what's happening to the rear of the site because that's been, you know, obviously, I want to make sure they're comfortable with that. But we are developing a full plan.
There's noticing that the grading goes, goes all the way up to the property line, so you're going to have some sort of a landscaping plan that goes all the way along? That, that's...
Goes right, right, there's landscaping, because there's a lot of grading and balancing in the site.
Yeah.
And we have to, in order to do that, we have to re-vegetate and re-landscape in areas where we disturb or where we fell.
And Counselor...
We're prepared to do that.
I was just going to say, Priscilla Ryder also had pointed out that the, I think in her comments, the desire to make sure that there was really a substantial landscape offer along Crowley Drive so that if, so that if you're using the bike trail, so you can really sense, get that sense of insulation.
Well, there's actually a burden that going on in Crowley Drive, just so you know, you know, we get caught with the hot weather now, so I'm, I'm waiting a few weeks before we plant the trees along the bike trail. But there's a whole row of maples going on both sides of the bike trail, all the way up into the woods there. It's going to look, and then you have the wildflower mix that's going to be on the slope there between the bike trail and the road. And then you have on the other side, on the, on the housing side of Crowley Drive, you're going to have this landscaping plan with these nice planted entrances. I mean, it's going to be very, very aesthetically pleasing.
I was, I was looking at the, the layout of the roads and so on. Do you have sidewalks proposed? Sidewalks?
Uh, no, the sidewalks aren't being proposed right now.
Any reason?
Uh, well, the reason for it is that, and these type of layouts, like the ones that we've already done, there isn't through traffic on all dead-end roads. And the, you know, the elderly people that just, I mean, just like everybody else, they just get in their cars and go. They don't necessarily, I mean, they will walk, you know, to take walks, take the dog for a walk, that sort of thing. But the, the roads being 28 feet wide and not that much traffic in it, the speed limit's very low.
Even if you had it just one side?
Pardon?
Just saying, even if you had it one side. I'm just, and the reason for it being is that, you know, I think you're underestimating the elderly, which I'm...
We're one of them.
There are, there are a lot of active adults.
Yours there too.
Unfortunately, a lot of these councils are going to, going to meet our criteria for acceptance.
One thing we were considering is putting some trails through the green areas, you know, rather than just a standard sidewalk.
See, and the reason for it...
Landscaping plan.
See, the, the reason I said that is that, you know, if you, each one of these is a spur road off, going into a cul-de-sac off of Crowley Drive. If the person really wanted to utilize the bike path down at the bottom of Crowley Drive, they'd have to come down the hill, cross Crowley Drive, and then go down the embankment to the, to the bike path. There is an embankment to the bike path. I'm just saying that, you know, the...
Can't ride a bike down. Can't ride a bike path, sidewalk. That embankment, just so you know, was intentional, because a lot of the bike riders are not from this complex, and, and they wanted to have a separation, a true separation of grade between, that was a big deal with the bike people, to make sure that we, we got the bike trail as far away from the road, and as much separation, both horizontally and vertically as possible, just, just, just so you know, that was intentional.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, for a person, if they wanted to, to walk, as I said, you know, some elderly do like to walk, and to get down to the bike path...
Jump over Crowley Drive to get to the bike path, yeah.
Yeah, to get down there. I'm not, I, you know, there might be even some sort of an idea, if you can have one, like, walkway that they could get to?
There is a spot, there is a spot right where the trucks were crossing, I don't know if you know, right there, about, maybe about a couple hundred feet in from the entrance there, which would be a nice cross, which would be, right, which would be a nice crossover, and, you know, we could put a, we could put a street marking in there, if, if the city engineer was okay with that, we could put a, a crossing, you know, for, for pedestrian crossing there, potentially. And that's fine, I mean, these are the kind of suggestions that we'd like to incorporate, both in the landscaping plan and the final plan. I mean, I mean, I love to walk, I like to ride bikes, it's a nice, I think it's a tremendous amenity there.
But I would think that if you're going to have a general crosswalk at some point, you'd have to run a crosswalk down Crowley Drive to that point, so that it would go to that point. So if a person came, came down from wherever they're living, could go down, instead of walking down Crowley Drive, walk down a sidewalk to that point, cross across, down to the bike trail, and then they could go all the way up, they could go all the way downtown if they wanted to walk.
Typically, just for whatever it's worth, even in subdivisions, conventional subdivisions, I've seen, I've built many of them, and you drive up there in a weekend, and the sidewalks on one or both sides, people are in the street. It's just human, I don't know why that is, but that's what people seem to do, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I mean, I'll do what the council wants me to do, but from a practical sense, you could put the sidewalk in, I bet you 80% of the people walk in the street.
Not in my area. You gotta walk down the sidewalk.
It's a bad street.
The more paved area you have, the less reach, I mean, there's a lot of reasons, you know, I mean, I'm willing to listen, you know, obviously. I mean, the cost is as tiny incremental, you know, cost and the scope of the whole thing, but I want to do as much vegetation as I can, and, and get people out on their, you know, sneakers, and that, that's what I'm selling. I mean, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to use that bike trail as a, as a sales tool.
You know, it's supposed to be for active adults, you know, over 55 active adults.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you don't put anything in there to, for activities, bother, you know, you have to, you have to promote it in that manner. If you have the bike trail, you know, they're going to have bicycles, at some point, maybe they can get to go to Hudson, maybe they can get all the way downtown, you know, at least they can get up to the, the old Stratus facility.
And chances, but, and most likely, chances are, they're going to be at the Asa Bet Fields. They're probably going to be walking around the track at the Asa Bet, you know, they're going to be, the chances are, that's going to end up being the interactions, be with Asa Bet.
They won't be allowed there.
They won't? I heard, I heard, yeah, I heard the principle's really going to be wicked.
For what it's worth, I think the bike trail is out to bid, or close to it, Priscilla probably knows better than I. Last I read, it was Mass Highway was going to open bids this fall or something. Is that right for something? Yeah, so, I mean, the piece from Hudson to downtown Marlborough is, is happening next construction season, so it's, it's, that's, that's not, I, I don't know beyond that, I think there's some property issues or rights in May or something. But the, you know, I, I guess what I'm saying is, there's quite a bit there for somebody to walk and bike, you know, within a year, by the time this project's up and running, the bike trail will be well on its way, and my section is very far along.
I take it, you know, I look at the bike trail as being finished the way it is right now, except for the landscaping.
Right, it is.
We're talking about the other pieces?
The other piece, all the way through, yeah, but that requires the diversion of 290 extension and everything else.
I just didn't think it was prudent, here we are, July 14th, to put trees in, whether you wait four weeks, five weeks, and we get into the fall, the trees will be a lot better off. I mean, you know, we lost a little, because we did, we, we're trying to do the best plan possible, so we had some last-minute changes that we worked out with the city, and we're going to go with it. But I've already placed the order, and I just want to wait for the, they don't want to dig in this time, you know what I'm saying, because you can take a chance, so this fall, we'll stick them in there.
If you, okay, if you would then, and I know you just got the information tonight, or the letter tonight from Priscilla, but address, you know, the first area, she talks about the wetlands permit, if you can address that for our next meeting, and there, in fact, you did talk about there is no landscaping plan, but you're working on that, and she talks in letter A about heavy landscaping between Crowley Drive and the units, and, in letter B, she talks about every inch of the hill being removed and regraded. You know, is there any way, she asked if there's any way to save some of those large standing trees, if you could look at that, and she would recommend that tree planting be required, you know, by us in the front and the back of the building, so look at how that impacts your plan. Three is drainage. She has a letter A and B under the drainage, if you could address those two areas. And number four, Priscilla discusses the second lot shown on the plan in the northeast corner, and does question whether or not that really does need to be cleared at this time, because there is no proposed plan for this particular location, and why not leave it be, you know, until you see what is proposed for that area.
I can answer that, if, that's a fairly simple one, is because there's a surplus to do this, when we were working on the other proposals, we were able to get the balance a little bit easier. Here, it's more challenging, Bruce can speak more to it in a technical way, but I can tell you that we, we need to put some material there to make it work, and we're actually going to be, you know, to get the, the grading to work out, because there's some, to make the, the units work, and not to have them all, you know, having these huge ups and downs, we have to put some material there. And I think it's important to note that we're going to work, basically, if you look at that plan, from the far, from our right, we're going to work from the right to the left. So the last units will be built, were the ones by the retention area, by, over that way.
By Fitchburg Street.
By Fitchburg Street, right. So that, that's important. And also, to respond to one of the other comments about the wetlands filings, I think it's important to note that the critical wetlands work is done on this project. The rest of it, there is no more filling, dredging, removing of any wetlands. There is work within buffer zone, but that's it, and very minimal at that. So there's very little work with, I mean, obviously, I still have to work with the Conservation Commission, as always, but there's no complex wetlands situations here at this site whatsoever. So I, I think it's important to note, the biggest part of the wetlands was the first phase.
But we understand that there will be wetlands filings regarding the wetlands, both in the, the, the upper right and the lower part.
Yeah, well, to deal with the retention area being remodeled, because as the, as the project, the retention area right now is sized to handle the road and a little bit more, as the project, you know, depending on the final, excuse me, the final project in development, you know, I mean, depending on where, how much impervious area, depends how big the retention area gets. And since this has been in flux for so many years that, you know, it was crazy, so we wanted to make sure we designed what we needed to for that road, which is in place and working and functioning, and been inspected and so on. And now, based on this plan, Bruce can supply the final...
Okay.
But that requires, you know, work with the conservation.
Right, exactly.
It's not huge work, but it's, it's, it's part of the standard procedure.
Okay, and then, well, as I said earlier, then, her numbers one through four in her letter, if you could just address those, or as much as that by next week, it's new that's possible to do. And then another communication that we, we have is from, from Mr. Anastas, in representation of your meetings with the, with the neighbors, and, you know, just to review it, he does, and I'm sure you have a copy of it, where you discussed it. Again, he talks in his number one about the sloped area along the Westerly property line, and the request that it be terraced and planted, and, you know, the permanence of soil and be graded, the grade not, the graded slope not to exceed, I'm sorry, I can't read the number.
It says three to one.
Three to one.
And to fill, to fill in the blanks there, like I said, I did some cross-sections, I mean, I should say Wes Worth did. In areas where, terracing means, you know, there, there are some sections there, because the way the, the land works, there are some, some areas where there are some small parts of walls, but those would be stepped, where there is, there'd be steps, so the grading in between those certainly would be three to one or less. But beyond that, there'd also be planted, so you'd have, you know what I'm saying, it would soften the whole thing. In areas where, like, that's, that one's completely graded, a slope not to exceed three to one, that's actually is Mr. Anastas's house. We use that and Mr. Williams. The reason we use those two is because one has a small amount of wall, and one has none, and that's the way we were going to, you know, handle it, to give you an idea. Mr. Worth is going to be meeting at the neighbor's convenience with him directly, just to determine each site-specific, I'm, you know, we actually, we actually, I don't know, you probably know this, but we actually walked it with landscape architect and neighbors. I mean, I want to make everybody happy, it's been a long road for them, and, and, you know, I want to get them so they're, they're thrilled.
All right, it's, the second one then talks about the distance between the buildings, 75 feet, which does include decks and the property line on the site.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit less than that, Bruce. From the property line to the deck?
At a post-point down, Mr. Anastas' house. Snowball, 45. It's up 48 feet on the deck to the ground, and it's still here, 48, 50. So you've got, this one's 48, this 55, they're in the same space.
Mm-hmm. That's to the property line, not to the, not, not to the back of the hustle stall. But we'll work with, we'll work with the neighborhood on that.
Okay. The next item, just with the lighting.
Yep.
To be diverted away from the property of the, the butters.
Well, if you notice...
There's just, I mean, I don't, there just seems to be so, you know, they've just made so, so many strides as far as this lighting is concerned, that you really, that, that shouldn't be hard to comply with, I wouldn't expect.
Especially now, it's only the back of the units.
Right.
You know, there's no street, there's no headlights.
Lighting on the decks.
There's no perimeter road like there was, so that's all gone. Deck lighting would just be, you know, a 60 watt, you know, safety light outside.
No freestanding telecommunications towers or other antenna systems.
Come on.
Including building mounted systems, serving commercial uses or third-party uses erected on the site. That's way too bad, huh?
I didn't tell you WBZ's put a tower there?
You can't tell it from that unit, but it's a very tall unit.
Madam Chairman, I think that the, also the concern was the other nine acres that are budding, is that there's not convenient towers on that property.
Okay.
That's fine.
One of the people mentioned that.
And other, we should...
On any of the, why don't we say on any of the 41 acres, that's fine with me, which covers everything.
Then the next one talks about the drainage system, and I know Priscilla also talks about drainage, and you'll be dealing with that, not, you know, in several different venues, but...
Drainage actually gets improved over its natural condition with the project.
Do you have to, John, do you have to enlarge that drainage, that detention basin one, by how much?
It's going to be increased, actually, it's shown on the, the plan that's there, percentage-wise, from, what is your first drive?
We're holding, we're facing the berm that's at the down drainage side, cutting it up towards the hill, we can look at the grating, it's a good idea, it's pretty close towards this, we actually did one, the drainage out of 40 acres, so you can see, the bottom of the basin now's got to be less than 20 feet wide, and the pole, it's going to be at what is...
Bottom to bottom?
It's about 70 feet wide at the bike's point. So the bottom of the basin, we're creasing three times with...
I think the, I think the important thing to note there is that the berm that faces the resident, the three residential houses that's closest there is not changing. Everything's coming towards me.
Yep, you, there is some grading on this side, because we're bringing up the grades, you can see that the proposed grades will be here, these are all existing grades, there's some, so what's happening when the basin gets expanded, is, it's going this way, and it's going this direction, or it's, it's going away from what it is.
Yeah, the, the bottom presently is 90 feet, Bruce.
The bottom is presently 90 feet.
Presently 90. As proposed, as proposed, as proposed, it will go to 90 feet from one side to the other, 90 feet. From top to top, it's 120, 123, from top to top, all the way across. It's got to go uphill, though.
Now, are you saying 123, lengthwise versus...
Widthwise.
Widthwise.
Lengthwise?
Oh, the top to top, bold now, or?
Lengthwise, you're looking at 270 feet.
Uh, it's, it's pretty good. It's a 60, 60 scale.
60 scale.
60 scale, okay, from top to top, is...
Yeah, the top being set at 110?
About, yeah, it's about 250, 260, top to top, and...
250, 260.
The top, the top on the width, the width to width, is about, it's going about 250, uh, 150, and...
How many acre-feet is that going to, how many, how many acre-feet will that be?
Uh, I wish I had a report here, I can tell you, it's, it's going to, it's going to be over one acre, I can tell you that.
It's a good size, then.
It's going to probably be much, much more than one acre. But the, the rationale there is that we're trying to substantially reduce the flow.
Yeah.
Actually, the orifice, that's, that's going to leave that, it's an eight-inch diameter orifice, and all, all...
That's there now.
It's not going to go over the building. The whole idea there is we're trying to over, over-design this thing.
You're going to have to change the height of it?
No, the height's going to stay the same, a 310 elevation, it's going to maintain that.
Because, you know, I didn't know if you, on a drainage divide, you couldn't divert some in another direction.
Right.
I'm just saying, if you had a drainage divide, you could always take and send some of the drainage in an opposite direction.
Well, the drainage divides, will the entire product somewhere around here, or it's splitting the flow between this basin and this basin that's down here.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Basin two.
The other basin, what they do is, one, drains through a, a large secondary detention facility slash for-bait treatment area. So before the water gets down to this, we call it a tension basin number two, but it's actually an isolated water area.
Yeah, that's, that's always existed.
That's existed, correct. Currently, it's, the water from the road is going down there, and off the hill, and runs through a very small for-bait, the for-bait with size for the road, hill remaining, but what's going to happen is, because we have more flow coming into it, we need to put another, another detention basin up here before it gets into that, on system.
Not being jurisdictional, you know, it doesn't really fall under conservation, but does affect conservation, is when you go in and you strip an entire project, it's almost totally stripped now anyways, you know, except for those, those spots of trees that were, that are remaining. You know, you have to come up with a pretty comprehensive erosion control plan, so as not to affect your neighbors down the street, on both sides, the Asa Bet Valley side, and also the Fitchburg, Lower Pleasant Street side.
We're proposing to submit to the commission, would be a construction sequence and erosion control, so actually a sequence, steps out for each phase of the project, so you have an idea of how much soil is exposed, at what point the soil can be exhaled, and where the erosion control's going to be implemented for each phase as you go along.
Do you have, have some idea as to, you know, in your construction sequencing plan, as to, you know, your, you have material that you have to move. I don't think you have any loam left there, do you? Is there a loam pile there, John?
There is. There's some loam stockpiles. There was not much loam to begin with.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that, you know, you have stockpiles that you have to place around site where you have rocks, you have gravel, you have loam, you know, so that you won't have to move them, you know, you know, place them in strategic spots so that you don't have to move them three or four times, and you develop, you don't develop the problem with dust, you know, that will affect the neighbors, you know, dust piles blown off, you know, runoff that goes down creates a problem.
I think, but, you know, you have to look at the site today, and you look how open it is, and we don't have a runoff problem. I mean, you know, the site's contained, I mean, for the most part.
It is now.
Yeah. Yeah, we had one problem with one pipe that was, that was frozen that one time, we couldn't fix it, but now it's done.
No, there has been some, some stuff up gradient that we talked about, you know, they were going to make some changes, but nothing's been done. Have you, have you made those changes?
Bruce, yeah.
Up gradient up at the top of Crowley Drive.
Yeah, are you talking about by the...
There's the one on the top, then there's another one that was right on Crowley Drive, where the, where the ducks were landing.
Okay, yeah, this sedimentation trap, well, since the, the project will start its phasing over this way, the stockpiling area and that sort of sedimentation trap, which are there currently, they already made here, and the staging for the construction, which will utilize as a stockpiling area, it's already stabilized, will augment the sedimentation trap as needed, so increase it. We think that the outcome with that sedimentation trap is working pretty good, as far as kind of treatments, we want to work off of that. And so, if the stockpiling areas over in this area, the later stage, we'll be able to stockpile there for most of the project, because we're going to, if you're talking about, you know, three, four-year buildup here, then this stockpile area is going to be there for a long time, and we're going to work off of that.
You know, in the process of construction, you know, everybody is in a rush to, you know, they, they strip the site, they put their stockpiles around, they rough grade their roads, they put their utilities in, then they want to start setting foundations and building, building units. And the problem that you run into is that you don't have the binder down on the street, you have parking vehicle, you know, construction, people in the construction process trying to park their vehicles, you have construction trailers, you have, you know, all the other things that come along with them, you know. I think that what you have to do is have to, have to binder down on the road before you even start putting the stick up. You know, understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely. I mean, I think you have to look at the, how Crowley Drive was constructed, I mean, that's a hundred percent finished, except for bounds and landscape, and I even went back on my own after the plan was approved and added, we put in, the finished top is on there now, so all the catch basins and everything work the way they would work forever. But I even went back and said, "Look, you know, have it all finished up front, and then if, you know, go back later after the whole development is done, and then do an overlay," and I set up the curb reveal to receive that. So, it's brand new now, and it's brand new then. So, you know, I, I, I went the extra mile there.
Because you have your curb cuts, you have your curb cuts.
Right, but until that...
Are you going to create your curb cuts as you go along?
Yes.
As you go along?
That's the way I was going to do it, just punch into it one by one as I go along. And then the final, when, when all is said and done, the basins will be raised, even though there's top there now, this just gives you a much, even a better road, because now you have more pavement thickness. When all is said and done, anything that happens to that street by anybody, cement truck...
Are yours.
What's that?
It's all your problem.
Well, I know that. But what I'm saying is, when the project's all, everything's my problem, but when the project's all done, what I'm saying is, we've set it up, even though there's finished top there now, we're going to do additional overlay, so it will be brand new again. See, most people put the binder in and then do everything, and then they go back with one overlay. What I'm saying is, I finished the whole thing, and I'm still going to go back and do another overlay once all is said and done, to take up for any of these, you know, when the curb cuts are done, if there's a little damage done there, you know, or a patch, okay, there's a patch, but we're going to go back and do a, you know, a monolithic overlay in the future, set up that way. So, I'm already thinking the way you're thinking, as far as making sure everything's a hundred percent, before lumber and...
Are you going to put in a, like a demonstration unit?
Models will be three.
Where?
In the first phase, first phase, which will be the closest to two-ninety.
Way, way down?
Yep.
So, like two-twenty-two?
Yeah, the idea of the whole thing was, not only does the site grading and fill, site, what we call site balancing, work the best that way, it also works the best because we have to get the emergency access in, up front, otherwise there's not an emergency access, you know, if it isn't there. Secondly, secondly, we're working out of the project. So, we're not...
Mr. Turcott was wondering when the emergency access was going in, he just got that answer.
We're, we're working out of the project, in other words, we're working our way out, so people who live down toward the front don't have concrete trucks, an endless parade of lumber trucks and everything else, we're working away from it, so that's...
Good way to do it.
I think that's the best way to, we've given this a lot of thought, both from a marketing perspective, a fill perspective, a wetlands perspective, and everything, and that's the way to do it, work from the two-ninety towards Fitchburg, that's how we're going to, I mean, that's the sequencing plan that you're going to receive.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could, you know, even provide this, this board a...
Sure.
A copy of it.
I'm happy to.
I think, the reason for it being is because many times, they're in the dark, ask, "How's this thing going to happen?"
Absolutely.
You know, they don't know where it's going to start, where it's going to end. I think you have to really spell it out.
Absolutely, and I, I have no problem with that, and I just want you to know verbally, but I'm happy to give you a document that reflects that. But that's, I mean, if you look at the logistics of it, that's really, I think, is the most proper way to do it. And the engineers concur, I hope the board concurs.
Somebody else a chance to talk.
Thank you. Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, the applicant, are these going to be owner-occupied and the deed restricted?
Well, you can't, we went through this before in the last villages, okay? They, our intent is to have every, then these aren't, they make no sense to rent economically, you know, but you have a situation, you can't preclude or foreclose the fact that, let's say, for instance, an elderly parent buys one of these, and that person passes away, okay? The family might be in a situation where they're not able to sell the unit at that moment for market conditions or whatever, they might have to rent it. You can't say they can't rent it. On the other hand, we're not marking this as a rental, this is, this is being marketed as an owner-occupied. Typically, what happens in a case like this is people sell their existing single-family home. My goal here is, is to have this so they can purchase this, put a few dollars in their pocket from the sale of their existing home, and pay off college loans for their kids or go to Florida or something, you know, that's really the economics of it. But they have to, the family, the family has to have the right, in certain situations, to rent, and I think that'd be, in most cases, if it ever happened, it would be an interim. I couldn't tell you the statistics of rentals in the other projects, but I don't think it's many.
Well, the reason why I'm saying is, as you said, John, if someone passes away and is deeded to their kids, then they may not sneak in, but kind of move in and then destroy the over fifty-five.
They can't do that.
Can't do that.
No. That's all, that's all, without getting into the whole legal thing, it's all, it's all, that is all, yes, in that respect, it's all deed restricted, okay?
By the way, we'll provide you with the condo docs for the next meeting, and we'll try to highlight those sections so you feel comfortable with those.
Two hundred and twenty, some odd units, if they're rental versus owner-occupied, is a different type of atmosphere.
Very different unit.
That's not what we're driving at here.
I know that's not what you're driving at, but...
But I understand your concern, I want to address it, and the fact is, when they buy this, they buy it with conditions. One of those conditions is, I mean, even the children that own it can't necessarily live there in the case of that death, they'd have to rent it to a viable candidate who does meet the criteria or sell it.
Okay.
But those are the only two options, they, they can't move in.
But Counsel, you make a good point, you want to make sure that the condo documents give the condo board the power to impose that restriction, so that if somebody...
That's correct.
Doesn't want to play by the rules, they've got the power to impose it, that makes sense. And we, and I think we made, as a part of the, 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 the other retirement community proposals that were here, that any violation of the condo docs is automatically a violation of the special permit also, and then any change of the condo docs to, to make these things more lenient would also be a violation of the special permit, just to make sure that doesn't happen.
Which would affect the title, and they just couldn't do it.
That's, that's what I was looking at, Greg.
So, we'll provide that for the next meeting.
It's an insurmountable revision.
Number six on this document then talks about a fence being erected around the detention basin, which obviously we would require anyway, the request is that it be a wood, not a black plastic.
That's fine.
Okay. Number seven addresses, asking that you use good faith in efforts to minimize the disturbance of existing vegetation in connection with the installation of underground utilities and a service road in the portion of the site between the property currently owned by Donald and Joan Turcott and the Route eighty-five connector. I would assume you've talked into, spoken to the Turcotts about this situation.
Turcott and I know each other quite well.
Okay.
He has a fortunate situation where he has a lot of the area around his house that buffers there, but that is the one piece of the site that is ledge.
Okay.
There's a small, some outcroppings there, and, you know, there will be some uncomfortable, you know, but we're going to do it as quickly and as swiftly as possible, and give him the vegetation that he chooses that he wants along the road, whatever that may be. I think he'll, ultimately, he'll end up with less sound post-construction than he has currently, because right now you hear every car that goes by there, there's no, there's very thin vegetation, but we can put some more of the, more evergreen, I think, then we'll work with Mr. Turcott on that.
Okay, thank you. Number eight, the service road connecting the property and Pleasant Street shall be gated and locked to allow access only by emergency vehicles, and that's something that we often do, and, you know, again, we would listen to...
There was one thing, Madam Chair, I was going to allow with that.
Request of our department heads on that.
Right.
We need to, yeah.
Using a Knox box lock, but there was one thing that the neighborhood had asked me about, and I wanted to mention this, because I don't want to preclude this on the special permit unless everybody decides they want to, I mean, it's up to everybody in this room, but the neighbors, it's a nice walking trail for them to walk through the site and get onto the bike trail, rather than having to, you know, walk strategically around everything. So, I'd like to work that out with them as well, if, if, if Mr. Turcott doesn't have a problem, that the neighbors could walk and bike up that service road, not, no motorized vehicles or anything, but the people from Pleasant Street could get up into the site that way. It's easy as gray, because the road that currently accesses the site is what they call Stairwell Drive, I don't know if you remember that, but that's that, and that's going to be filled in with trees and landscaping, there's not going to be any access through there.
Okay.
So, the only access point for that neighborhood to the bike trail that I'm aware, other than driving all the way, riding or biking all the way around Fitchburg and up the hill, would be to go up that little connector, and that's not going to be used by vehicular traffic, other than in times of emergency.
Okay.
Could be a nice amenity for the neighborhood, so if the neighborhood decides they want that, we could include that, if they're not, that's up, that's up to the neighborhood.
Okay.
It's there, I just didn't want to foreclose it, if that's what you want.
Okay.
Chair, if I may respond to that?
Sure.
Mr. Turcott said that you could lock the gate and just leave a little opening to be able to drive a bike to the left of the opening.
Yeah, that's usually what they do, they put three posts in, two posts hold the gate, and then there's another post to, you know, like allow a bike or pedestrian with a, or baby carriage, you know, through, through it, you know, but you couldn't drive, for instance, you couldn't drive a car through it.
Okay, I'm sure you'll work with him.
Yeah. But I think it's a nice amenity, that's all I'm saying.
Number nine speaks to the vegetation buffer of no less than fifty feet along the site boundary that abuts those properties currently zoned as residential, including residential aid two. This vegetation buffer shall consist of white spruce trees, six to eight feet in height, in a staggered pattern spaced ten to twelve feet apart.
What I'd like to do is address number nine, and address number, number one, and number two with Wes Worth and the neighborhood, and we'll come back with a consensus on those three, because that's really all interlocked.
That's fair, that's fine.
And I think that way there, because Wes is going to meet with, with, with the folks either this week or, I'm going to try to get it done, Wes is willing to meet this week, assuming, I haven't got a firm confirmation from all the neighbors, but even if we do a couple of nights, three or four neighbors a night, you know, we'll get it, so everybody's...
Okay. And the last, just number ten, is a long-term maintenance and cleaning of the retention ponds.
And I'm, you know, for the record, I want to be a good neighbor, okay, and I think I have been, and I'm trying to do everything for everybody that I can, and the retention pond, you know, retention pond one I know has had some questions by certain neighbors, and our intent is to keep it well-maintained, you know, we, we went out there with everybody to look at the whole site, and, you know, there was a very minute punch list for a project this size, the project looked very, very good, and that's our style, we're going to keep it up that way, it's less problems in the long run for everybody.
And the last correspondence I, I'm going to, Counsel Page, is going to address that with you, from our chairperson on the Commission of Disabilities for this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman, I'd like to just read this letter. The Marlborough Commission on Disabilities recommends that all new complexes be constructed with universal access in mind. Universal design will make living from birth to death in the same home possible. There would be an entrance that would be accessible to all. The doorway, doorway would be wider to accommodate a person pushing a baby carriage, a person using crutches, or a walker, or even a wheelchair. The doors and hallways inside the house would be a little wider than usual. The bathroom walls would be built strong enough for installation of grab bars where needed. There would be, there would be enough room to maneuver a wheelchair in the bathroom and in the kitchen. The deck of porch would be at the same height as the floor in the house, making it possible for everyone to use it. Laundry would have front-loading washers and dryers with front-mounted controls. What they're saying here is basically, nobody should be forced from his or her home because of physical limitations due to age or illness. If complexes and condos are built with universal design in mind, a person could spend their whole life in one house, or from fifty-five to whenever, without having to move, and the house could be constructed to move with them, or to grow with them. With a few minor changes, this home could be adapted to his or her needs, such as high toilet, lowering shelves, and closet rods. Commissioner Steve Reed also added his comments to it. He said, "The intent of universal design is to simplify life for everyone by making products, communications, and the built environment more usable by as many people as possible at little or no extra cost. Universal design benefits, benefits people from all ages and abilities." My personal feeling is that this would be a great complex to see this started on in the city of Marlborough. I don't know, is it adds a lot to the expense, it just means ramping the front of the houses, which would be done as a walkway, just eliminating the step going to the front door. I believe the standard front door, which is thirty-six inches, is wide enough.
What I wanted, I've given this some thought, because I did, I, the person that wrote that was kind enough to send me the facts to my office, so I had time to think about it and how I'm going to address it. First, I'd like to start by saying, those of you might, may not be familiar, my mother has MS and has been in a wheelchair for twenty years. She actually lives at the villages of Crane Meadow, I don't know if you know that or not, but she does.
I knew that, yes.
She's a character, too, but anyway, and we, you know, I've never, having been raised with, you know, been involved in that with my own personal situations, I know what the frustrations are for the, you know, everybody has different levels of abilities or disabilities, whichever. These units can be adapted, if, you know, certain people, you need more, like if you start a situation where you want to lower the kitchen counters, because if somebody's in a wheelchair up front, you know that when you buy, for most cases, you know that, we can do that. I'm always willing to, you know, accommodate, and there's special sinks and other things that, you know, the, you mentioned about the thirty-six inch door, that's correct, and actually leaving, you know, first-floor doorways, so that you can get around with inside the unit, and the decks on the outside going to the rear. The, the only place I have a real problem, to be honest with you, out of most of it, is, is the front deck, because the style of the unit, there is one step, and that is easy to mitigate with a, with a ramp, a very small ramp, but I think it would be, I think having them, I think aesthetically, it could be a problem where I'm doing porches to give the country approach, you know, aesthetically in the front, so I'd have to work a little bit on that, but, you know, I, I would tell you that the things that you couldn't change internally would meet most, if not all, those standards that we could as best we can. But I want to tell the board, and I want to tell everybody that's, you know, watching this on TV or anywhere else, that anybody that comes to us and wants a handicap unit, depending on what the level is, we're always willing to talk. I have to tell you that a lot of the things are expensive, very expensive in some cases, as far as the grab bars and things, that's pretty straightforward, putting backers in the walls and things like that, and I think that's a good suggestion, and I think that's something we could certainly incorporate. And we already use a handicap toilet, elongated bowl, I use that on all my units already, because it's a taller bowl, rather than, it's, I think it's an inch and a half or two and a half inches taller than the normal toilet, I could be off, I'm not a plumber, but I, because that's a normal, today, that's a, that's a really good toilet, and that's a handicap, that is the handicap ADA toilet, you know. So, other than the front, the initial front, because that would change the whole architectural design of what I've designed, spent a tremendous amount of time designing the front of this elevation, but it'd be very easy to adapt it if somebody was in a wheelchair, you know what I'm saying, so on a case-by-case basis, and very inexpensive.
The only problem with having to adapt afterward is many condo associations do not want things adapted afterward that are on the outside of the building, that makes any unit look different from any other unit. I live in a condominium, and I'm a member of the association and have been for years. And this is, this is one thing, people want to make changes, they want to paint their front door red or purple, and we don't allow it, and I'd be afraid that somebody would run into that same problem. You've got people fifty-five moving in, so what's the chances of having somebody having a stroke somewhere along the line, all of a sudden, boom?
Right, it's very likely.
You know, they're in a wheelchair, and they've got no way in and out of the house. I think universal design just makes the house acceptable, it does not make, it doesn't allow for lower counters, or it just makes it so that it can be, can be modified as necessary, if the people need it, obviously, a different type of kitchen with the lower necessary, if the people need it, obviously, a different type of kitchen with the lower counters and so forth, that's something they would have to, you know, do on their own.
Counselor, I think, I think consistent with what you're saying, perhaps for the next meeting, we could develop a list of those universal design aspects, which we would say, as a condition of the special permit, would be automatic to every unit. If there are particular items, like the one that John was just referring to, this issue of the front door, I think we could probably address the issue you're raising right now through a, through a, through a, a bylaw provision, that would specify, it certainly, well, it certainly makes sense that the, in general, the condominium association should be able to control for the purple door, they shouldn't be able to control for a handicap access, right?
Right.
Certainly in a retirement community, so we should be able to put something right in there, and something, once again, which can't be changed, you know, by, to specifically, to specifically address.
We live in a northern climate, as you know, and I like to see a reveal, you know, I mean, I like to see some con, I mean, concrete out of the, you know, out of the, out of the grade, and these all have porches with corbels and Victorian fiddly work and this type of thing, you know, I think we can make a, a universal attachment, so to speak, that would, if somebody needed it, this would be the design that we would have, that could go on any unit if you needed it, and there's nobody, you don't have to call anybody, here it is, the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And that does it, but in the meantime, you know, 99% of the people want the standard porch in front, but the deck that goes out the back would be a roll, you know, we could do all that flush, that's a little less of a problem.
Right.
Because that's, you're already in the unit at that point.
It could be flush with the inside, which I think is easier anyway, even if you're walking.
But you're already in the unit.
Right.
At that point, that's the difference, you know what I'm saying, so the grade has already been adjusted.
Would you have sliding doors on those units?
On the, what, for the back?
Onto the, onto the rear deck, sometimes they have...
Yeah, the way I, the way I've designed my units is, if you look at the plans, the floor plans, each room, each bedroom on the first floor, and each living space has its, the way the decks are like saw-toothed into the unit, so each one has its own door to the deck, it's really nice, so everybody has like a private deck, even though it's one deck, so that all...
Slider, or is it a slider?
Slider, yeah, that's what I'm planning on, but I mean, I, that might change to, do it, but it would be a 36-inch swing, either way, but I understand that, having lived with, you know, the situation, I mean, I'm a little bit more sensitive than most, I mean, my mother severely can't do anything, I mean, she's literally tied to that wheelchair, so it's a tough situation, and I understand it, and it's, you can't appreciate it till you're, till you're in it, so.
Do we have any, any comments from any of the department heads who are here this evening, to add this evening, or?
Just at some point, we're going to need to see a traffic report.
That's been done.
Yes, and we had, and we're sorry that we hadn't gotten it to you yet, we have actually, we've, we've got it by tomorrow.
It's been done.
Yeah, obviously.
The traffic?
Yeah, obviously, it's going to show that the numbers are significantly lower than what you had seen in the previous traffic studies.
In fact, it's changed the whole picture, because there's, there's no off-site, there's not, I mean, it doesn't impact, so.
But we'll, but we'll get that in right away.
Now, the numbers are approximately 50% or less, every case, every case.
But the different peaks, the way it all works, it's, it's minimal.
Okay. Counselor, yes, Ed.
Also, thank you, Madam Chairman. One last point, one last point. Probably won't be too popular with you when I say this, but, you know, you know, we're not, I'm not talking about 40B complex or anything like that.
That's all.
There is a, we don't, we don't, we haven't reached the, our 10th census yet. We don't know if Fairfield is going to go through and get to that one unit over, but my point is, is that, you know, we have a large, large units, lots of units going in out there, 222 units. Is there any possible way of putting aside some of these units, I'm not talking about large numbers or anything like that, is, with the possibility of them being put up as affordable units? You know, I'm, I'm not talking large numbers.
I just...
So that would be, they would be counted toward those affordable units.
I got to tell you that if that's the case, this project's a non-starter for me.
It's what?
It's a non-starter, it just isn't going to happen. I, I made that upfront, you know, and I know that's, might not be the popular view, but, and I'm not one usually to disagree with you, Mr. Clancy, but I, I, I have to tell you that that's, I don't think it's, you know, all the other projects that are developments that are in town, that are, that I would be competing against, and across town, and in neighboring towns, none of them have that requirement.
I'll tell you why, I'll tell you my reasoning, is that what is happening now, John, is that we are now experiencing intrusions into neighborhoods, small neighborhoods with large lots, you know, that do not conform to the present zoning. You have a 50-foot frontage with a 37,000-square-foot lot, and they want to put four units on that lot, one unit being 40B, one unit, okay? This is in the center, this is in a residential area. Now, you, you take a look at this, and I think all of the councilors really have to take a look at this, is that if Fairfield does not come through with all of the units as proposed, we might be looking at 40Bs being here, there, and everywhere, all over the city on non-conforming lots, and I'm just saying is that it's, it's a little matter of protection that the city can have, you know...
Talking to 88 units into Ward Two right on Farm Road.
Maybe, maybe I could respond in part, because I'm familiar with some of those comprehensive permit implications. I, I, I think, Counselor, certainly, certainly your point is well-taken, that as long as there is some kind of gap, there is certainly that possibility of a number of projects. Once, once you have hit your, the 10% number, though, you're going to be at that 10% number until 2011, until the next federal census, which gives you a fairly substantial amount of room in which to do, ideally, affordable housing initiatives like the ones that you have been doing, where you've got scattered site, where you're doing, where you're taking stuff all around the city, really, in the areas where you've got a lot of existing affordability, and you're simply putting that affordability into, into perpetuity. So I think you've got a lot of options for dealing with that, and you do have the, well, let's call it a mixed blessing, the mixed blessing of the Fairfield project, which, you know, which, which appears to be developing kind of a consensus of support, and, and as you know, as, if, 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 if that project gets acted upon, then after, from the, from the date that that project is approved, even if it gets appealed, for DHCD purposes, you're at your, your magic number. The only reason why I mention that is, I know that there is this other related issue, and I, and I know that Grace Lyons, you know, referred to it in her, in her letter as a, as an individual, you know, writing to you folks, that there's this, there's this issue that, that with, that in elderly, that there has been this, what appears to be this incredible appreciation in prices in, in the elderly housing stock, but I think when we started, we're all the same councilors that have been doing this, you're the same folks, and we're the same folks who have been doing this for like a year and a half, and what we, what, what John indicated starting off, was that the only way that he could do this one, was if he were intentionally doing a denser project, and a project where the units were a little smaller, and where therefore his price point was going to, was going to put him below the existing market, and that's why he's estimating a price point of a quarter of a million dollars for the units. To the extent, to the extent that you're, that you're talking about any affordable, any quote-unquote affordable units, which would therefore be priced at probably about $150, you're talking about having to generate an internal subsidy within this project, every one of those units of $100,000, so you're basically just imposing an additional cost, you're basically forcing him to try to generate more money, or forcing him into a higher price bracket on the rest of his units, just to take care of that handful of units, right? Which, which, once again, to the extent that you were, you were at, you know, at, at this kind of significant risk this way, and you were really, really close, might make some sense, but it, where it certainly appears that, for all intents and purposes, you're going to hit your number, I think that that particular rationale kind of goes. I think it to, at least, I think it's a lot of, the, the view of a lot of people who are doing this stuff, that, that more, in, in a, in a broader way, your problem's going to solve itself, because the reason why those numbers have gone up so high, is there has been a real disparity between supply and demand in terms of elderly, and that, and that this is one of the first attempts to deal with that by actually starting to go below the market, as opposed to just following the market up.
How much are the units going to be priced at? What are they going to be priced at?
I have about two-thirds of the units are, are the, the smaller unit, which is as a single-car garage, and what are the, what's the exact mix, Bruce?
Okay, I can, I can read it to you there, let's see, I got it right here, I got it table right here, we have the Type A, Type A, and there's 186 Type, Type A, those are the smalls.
Those are the ones that are the entry, entry ones, and that would be in the 250 to 280 range, depending on where they're located in there, that's what I'm shooting for, and that, I have to be that, because right now, to be below the market, you know, I got to be in that range, that's what I want to start off at, and, and see what happens. Right now, you got to realize, there's a lot of 50, the other thing is, folks, there's a lot of 55 and older projects in surrounding towns that are either online or coming online shortly, and I have to compete against that, because you're not just, you know, you've got to be realistic, I mean, they're everywhere. When I first came here, I was a pioneer. Today, you know, Northboro's got a couple they're approving, you've got a, there's, I think, three new ones proposed in Hudson, there's a huge one going right now, that I approved. There's, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of competition out there.
See, what happens is that sometimes the price starts at 250, and then by the time you're halfway through the project, they're up to 300.
Well, you're caught, you're dealing with the commodities, though, you got to realize that concrete, and expenses, and things, and, and they're also getting more money, and also, in all fairness, they're getting more money for their house, you know, a lot of people are, the people that are on the receiving end of this benefit, too, you know, the people who buy early, you know, and, and there is, there's always some modest escalation as the project goes along, I'm not going to sit here and tell you there isn't, but I will tell you that, you know, if that is the case, that means other housing prices overall are going up, I mean, what's driving the house prices in Massachusetts isn't 40B, it's the tightening of 40A, and the reduction of buildable land. The more it's reduced, and the more density is, is questioned, the higher the prices are going to go, that's everywhere. And that's why houses cost what they do in Massachusetts, because so little land's buildable. That's the philosophical argument.
Point well taken, yes.
I guess we are hearing your point, though, we are understanding what you're requesting.
My point, my point is, is that, you know, if, I absolutely agree with you, John, 40A is the problem, because, you know...
You wouldn't even have 40B if 40A was practical.
That's right, but the only thing is, is that the 40B was aimed at communities not like Marlborough, not like Marlborough at all, you know, and what's happened is that the impact has been on these communities, and I'm just saying, it would be nice to have a little bit of a buffer, and you know, when you have a large project come in, if you were assigned two units, I'm not talking about 20, or 40, say two, you know, that's two units, if we go one over, we're happy for, with Fairfield. I say, two units, you know, it might be one of those situations, say, well, we had two, you know, we picked up two, and somebody else comes in, and I say, well, we want two from you, too, and, you know, I might two them all to death, but it's just, it's just an idea.
And we do have, I, I, you do have a copy of it, I did say our final correspondence was from ADA, but we also have a letter from Grace Lyons, and she addresses this issue. And she does say that she didn't participate in the, in the public hearing, but she wanted to get this in writing to us. She does firmly support the idea of more housing for 55s, but she wants to express her disappointment in the fact that there are no affordable units available in any of them, I mean, she, you know, we recognize that, and she talks about being a resident and a homeowner in Marlborough, and participating in many discussions concerning the need for various types of housing. As someone who is eligible for the 55 housing, she has looked with interest in the possibility of purchasing one of these units, and however, she says that she was extremely surprised to discover that if she were to purchase a unit, her mortgage would be more than her current one is at this time, and then she said that she, led her to think about the situation, about other seniors who might want to sell their homes and move into a complex, you know, such as this one, or the existing ones, I'm sure she's talking about, the cost would be beyond many of their incomes and assets, and therefore, the need for this housing for Marlborough residents would continue, and she understands that the process, the project is not exclusively for Marlborough residents, but believes that the overwhelming majority of people who have been able to move to any of the 55 housing complexes in Marlborough are from communities to the east of us, and if the trend were to continue, people who have spent most of their lives in Marlborough will have to look beyond Worcester for this type of housing, and questions the councilors, and asks, is this, well, all of us, questions all of us, and asking, is this what we want to have happen to those people who have lived here and raised their families here, and were part of the growth and success of Marlborough? I ask that you think about the impact of the project, and the people who it will serve, and those who will not be able to participate or purchase there because of cost. If you have any more questions, she'd be happy to discuss it with any of us, and thanks us for the opportunity to express her thoughts, and I know you got a copy of it, but I didn't want to ignore, I had gone over all the other correspondence, and, you know, and it's a point well-taken, you know, and as, you know, as Ed has...
And let me, and I understand, and I know Trish has a question, so let me just say, you know, on the philosophical side, and this goes to Mr. Clancy's point, too, if you want to develop affordable housing, you can, and there's places to do it, you know, I mean, and, and I think a lot of communities getting, was proactive and really doing, and, and encouraging a developer to come in and say, "Look, we want some moderately-priced housing, here's the piece of land, and here's the density, we're going to let you do so that you can make some sense out of it." I mean, I'm just saying, that's, that's, I think, is the future, is communities working hand-in-hand with the development community, rather than some kind of adversarial thing, which is what 40B seems to have turned into for the most part. It should be more of a, think, how do we solve our problem, and how do we, for this particular person that wrote that letter, how do we address those things? The only way that's ever going to get addressed is through density, because the lumber costs what it costs, the concrete costs what it costs, and the land is expensive, so the only way you can distribute the cost of that land is over density, that's it. I mean, real density, and I'm not talking one unit for every 6,000 feet, you know what I'm saying, I mean, that's, so that's, that's, that's the answer in the future, I'm telling you, it's all boils down to density.
Counselor Pope.
I just wanted to ask if we could have Bruce finish with the, the price ranges you gave, you gave six units, can you tell me the prices of the rest of them?
I don't know about the prices, I can give you the, the sizes, the...
The numbers of units.
Yeah, the, the A unit is, the quantity is 186, the B...
That's the most affordable.
The B unit, which is the, the one at the end of the cul-de-sac, and it's kind of a, like an elbow shape, or L shape, is, there are 28 of those, and they're...
Do you estimate those?
Those are the most deluxe, those would probably be around three, around three.
Around 300.
Most deluxe, those have two-car garages, and, you know, they're very luxurious units.
Those are 2,200 square feet, I think, versus 1,600, yeah.
Very nice, I wanted to have some way to, I didn't want to, you know, I wanted to have a mix, so it doesn't levitate down, and make it so it's attractive.
And there are, the C units are, there are eight units, for the C units. Now, the floor areas, are you interested in the floor areas at all, first floor, second floor?
Or just, what's the, what's the total square footage of the C unit versus the B unit?
Okay, the, the, okay, the C unit is, that is up, is 11, it's about 1,700 square feet.
And John, what are you anticipating that those would sell?
The B is about...
So you've got, you've got about...
B is the most deluxe, the A is the most affordable, the C is the middle of the road, but there's only eight Cs. The eighth, the C unit is a unit that's designed as an, as an intermediate unit with a two-car garage, that's the fundamental difference, but what we did is we fattened out the unit slightly to accommodate that garage, that extra stall, versus the single stall with the smaller unit. Now, if you notice, that was all the units of Crane Meadow, singles, so a single-car garage doesn't seem to be a problem, but a lot of, you do get a lot of requests for two-car garages, so I wanted to address that with the C and Bs, but that's a very small percentage of the project, you add it all up. Is it 100, how many, 186 is that?
186.
186 out of 222.
That's like three-quarters.
Right.
The B and C units, they're both 2,200 square feet, roughly.
Can they get that information to us, as to how many units are A, B, and C?
Yes, I would have, if you could give that...
Sure, actually, that's on, that's on the plans that you got copies of.
Actually, on the plans, but we'll make it, I'm going to do it in a letter form, so it'll be cleaner.
Yeah, I'd draw it down, but it would be good just so you all have it on...
There's a lot of information there.
Okay, before, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Clancy.
I do just, I know I, I've spoken to you about it before, and I do struggle with the fact that there are no affordable units here. We have, in developments across the city, required them in the over-55, but that was left out, and that's why they haven't been required, and I do personally feel that we're doing it disservice to the folks that live here in the city, and as you said, it is a cyclical thing, that in order for some of these houses to turn over, people need someplace to go. over, people need someplace to go. They are, a lot of our over-55 residents are in some of the smaller houses in the city, and unless they have someplace to move to, that housing stock doesn't move, doesn't change over, and they no longer, a lot of people no longer want to bother with the upkeep of a house. And I do struggle with the fact that, your answer is positively no. I mean, as Counselor Clancy said, you know, perhaps you can reconsider and put a few affordables in here, something is better than nothing, but it is, it is a difficult issue for me.
I was just going to add, I know that, that John wanted to respond to Counselor Clancy, I wanted to add one thing, just as a suggestion. Thank you. And that is that, as, as we all know, it is the great tradition of the Marlboro City Council, and I suppose in other places, that once the, once, that, that you get to the end, when everything else is figured out, and then you know what everything's going to cost, and then you know how much is left, and that's usually the place at which you start talking about mitigation. You know, I think we're, we're premising some of our decisions, I would say, on, on the assumption that, that there will, that there will be the request for some off-site mitigation commitments. To the extent that there are, there are not off-site mitigation commitments, then that ends up, that we, then we end up having money that we didn't otherwise have, right? And then it might, it, it, that might be the time to revisit that conversation. I'm just saying, because, once again, this is all dollars and cents, this is all, this is all about dollars and cents, right? Because the, because the, because the people who are buying those units have to pay everything, including if we're paying for an affordable unit, the price, the subsidy of the affordable unit.
I just think, if you really want to solve the affordability situation, which I think you do, because I know I've spoken about it many times, and I think it is a situation that you have to address, but it has to be a situation where the city or the community of the town says, look, here's two acres of land that, or whatever it is, on Route 20 someplace, and we'll let you do this there, and because we're going to let you do that, we want this from you, right up front. Say, we're going to give you the permit, and this is what we want. And I think if you do that, you'd be surprised how fast your affordable housing stock will be built up.
But the only thing is, though, John, yours are 55 and older.
We could do a 55 and older 40B, friendly 40B.
But I'm just saying, is that we're looking at 55 and older, the amount of services, you know, you don't look at schools in those services, at 55 and older.
Which does make.
That's right, and that's why, every community's ideal project is an over-55 40B.
Right.
You have to fill your gap with no kids. Understood.
But who wants to build it?
Serious point. You said to a developer, you know, and put a proposal out there, or there was some land, or if a developer came in and said, look, I've got a very small parcel, but I need a lot of units, but then you're going to get in a situation where there's neighbors there that don't want that many units, I mean, the whole cycle starts all over again. The fact is, density is the answer to affordability, there is nothing else.
Because I remember when this first, this issue first came up, and I remember we were talking to Counselor Pope about it, because she was the first person to raise it, and John's immediate reaction was, no problem, as long as this isn't an over-55. As long as it's just, just a market-rate condominium project, we'll be glad to do the, add the affordables. Because now, we've got a whole, much bigger market, a world of people to sell to, we're not in a position where we, where we've got a whole bunch of other projects that we're competing against, and we're trying to price ourselves underneath all of those, right? But it is, it's very hard, because it's all, it's all, a lot of it's dollars and cents. Understood.
But we did hear your earlier comments concerning mitigation, so.
You know, as far as, like, A, B, and C units, like, I'm just curious as to, like, Unit 1, is that an A unit, or is that a B unit? And Unit 11, is that a, what is that?
Just pointing the designation on.
Okay, I can.
Just trying to get the.
Actually, there are three shapes that would be named, yeah.
It's almost like you can.
Well, if, to answer.
Different shapes, but it doesn't identify as A, B, or C.
What I, what, if you would get for our next meeting, if you could get something together for our next meeting, you've talked about 186 A units, 28 B units, and eight C units, and if you could just indicate, because we have the plans, you know, or on a piece of paper, just if you can indicate where they are placed.
We could do that, we could put a little symbol on it.
Yeah, we'll color them, we'll do something.
We could put like a little A, and a B, and a C on it.
Like, like Unit 1 is an A unit, Unit 2, you could do it that way.
So we can see how.
If we could put a symbol there, put it right in the drawing, I mean, we'll figure something out.
We'd have to get a whole new set of charts.
Spend a little bit rich, put an R. Gold, put them in gold.
You put it in just a sheet of paper.
Yeah, I think a sheet of paper would be fine, you don't have to give us a long plan.
We'll need another set of plans.
Yeah. No, no plans, just on sheets of paper.
You don't want any more paper?
We can color-code our own at our leisure.
No more of these.
Yes, we'll color-code, don't, you don't need to give us the big.
You need a 20 scale, fill the room.
No, we don't need that, thank you, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay? Are there any other questions?
Give me your hand out, so you can hold in your hand.